All right, let's go ahead and call our main order. Please. Thank you very much. One call Crystal, please.
Trustee here.
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 Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Trust Don. Trustee White House.
Here.
Mayor Protem Conyton. Mayor Hammond.
Here. Okay. I guess agenda. Anything that we want to bring up other than possible switching of some order?
Yeah, no, the only thing that there was a discussion about whether we could switch the order and have the presentation come before public comment. That way, if there are members of the community that would like to comment, if they have comments related to that presentation, they could make those after the presentation. Do we want to consider that?
Thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
Isn't typically the public comments set aside for non-agenda items? Yes, but. Right, but this is not an agenda item. Okay. So it'll be a non-agenda item when they talk about it, but they'll get the benefit of having the presentation before they talk. I'm okay with that. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and do that. We'd like to switch.
B one.
Public, yeah, B one with the B two.
Will Mr. Bird be ready for that? Is he okay with us doing that?
I have notified in my text message.
Okay.
Mr. He's probably listening.
Okay.
There he is.
Good evening. This is Cody Bird, Planning Director. I'm having a hard time hearing some of the communications from the back of the room. Could that statement be repeated?
I just wanted to make sure if we're talking about switching the public comment in your presentation, I just want to make sure that you were prepared for the presentation. We didn't mess you up.
Right. A couple of points of order here real quick, sorry. For the record, Mayor Protem Conyton's in the house. Next is any conflicts of interest tonight. Okay, no conflicts. Now we're back to Cody.
Sorry, Mayor, real quick, just not a conflict, but I did want to say that there was ex parte communication. I was in the room listening to the presentation initially to the Planning Commission for item D one. I don't believe there's any conflict, but I was present during that first Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. All right, let's move on. Cody, are you ready?
Well, Mayor, the presentation is ready. I can't see the attendees to know if my consultant team from Logan Simpson is all here. And so if the town clerk is working on getting people promoted here, I see Megan. Emily Morales would also need to be promoted. And Liz Young Winnie. If they'll all be presenting. Megan, did I miss anyone? Okay. Perfect. And Emily will be utilizing a screen share. So as long as she is able to do that for the presentation slides, then we would be ready to go. And, and, Mr. Mayor, I understood that we're going to go ahead and proceed with the presentation. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to, again, this is Cody Bird. I'm the Planning Director for the town. I wanted to kind of kick off the, this is the presentation tonight. This is a presentation of the draft comprehensive plan for the town of Wellington. This is a process that's been in work for, or in the works for a little over a year now. We kicked this off in February of 2020. Just in time for this crazy thing called COVID. That none of us had anticipated. So we really did kind of a unique. Kind of 180 on this project to go from what is typically a very heavily heavy engagement with in-person meetings to almost an all-digital campaign. And so we wanted to extend a huge thank you to the community of Wellington. For your ability to participate in the engagement and feedback efforts for our comprehensive plan under less than ideal circumstances. Really, thank you for turning out and providing over 700 unique responses to our inquiries and online surveys and questionnaires. So thank you all. I also wanted to thank our, our Plan Steering Committee, six members of the community who really were instrumental in helping to develop and guide the outreach efforts and ultimately this draft document that we're presenting to you tonight. So thank you to the Plan Steering Committee for your countless hours of meetings, review and thoughtfulness to get to where we are today. What we're going to do tonight is give you just a kind of a brief overview presentation of the draft plan. You can see on your, on your screen right now, what we're sharing is the topics that we're going to cover. Tonight is really just intended to be a presentation of the kind of the nuts and bolts of what is the plan and how it's arranged. Its purpose, what feedback we've received to date, how we've used that information to develop a foundation and goals for the comprehensive plan for this community, and then we'll kind of wrap up with next steps. We're not anticipating a significant amount of public comment tonight. This is really just a presentation. It's not the only presentation. It's not the only opportunity to provide feedback. We'll be having an online opportunity for public review. We'll have paper copies at Town Hall at the library. There will be plenty of opportunity for public review and comment, and we really encourage everyone to utilize the system in place to provide your comments so we can capture those and really reflect that in this planned document. So we're really not anticipating a lot of public comment or questions tonight, but we really want to capture that, that input and feedback in this review process. We'll share some more information in just a little bit on how to do that. So with no further ado, I want to give you kind of a presentation on the draft plan. And I've got some team members here from the town and from Logan Simpson who will be assisting in this presentation as well. I wanted to start off with kind of a how and why we plan. You know, if you can advance to the next slide, perfect. So what we do for, for community planning, this comprehensive plan is really, it's an advisory document. It's intended to guide the future decision-making for the town. And it's, this document is really long range in nature. It's intended to cover or look 20 years in the future and beyond. Sometimes growth happens quickly, as we've seen in the last decade. Sometimes growth is slowed down and it takes longer to, to build out a community. But if we don't have a plan in place, it's really hard to guide that growth and development in a meaningful way. So what this document is really doing is looking back at the town's history, using that information to establish a baseline, and then creating a future vision for where the town wants to be. That future vision is 20 years from now. We might get there sooner. We might get there later. It depends on how fast things move. But this document starts to identify goals and strategies that are used to help implement the vision. The document ultimately is advisory, like we say, but it does form the basis for other town documents and decisions, including our zoning code, our subdivision regulations, and other, other documents and decision-making processes. They all work together to collaboratively help the town move forward in the direction it wants to go. The other thing that the, I'll go back just a second, if you would, please. The other thing that the, that the town comprehensive plan will do is it establishes a growth management area. That growth management area is really, it's, it's defined as the area that the town anticipates it will grow into someday. And over the last decade, the town's grown fairly rapidly with annexation requests from property owners. And really what we've tried to do is anticipate through our growth management area where the town is likely to grow in this 20 to 25-year period. And have a plan in place for how the town will be able to provide infrastructure and public services to those areas when the property owner requests that they do something different with their, with their land. The Department of Local Affairs, or DOLA, has population estimates that they use to project where within the state of Colorado, growth is occurring faster or slower and helps municipalities like Wellington anticipate how to manage that growth. DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, has projected a 6.8% growth rate for Wellington in the Front Range here in the Fort Collins metropolitan area. If we were to use that 6.8% growth, you can see on the little diagram here, Wellington could be expected to grow up to 21,000 population by 2030, or even 41,000 in 2040, if that population growth rate were to continue. So the growth management area, the comprehensive plan, really helps us to set a tone and guide how, when, where, how fast that growth can occur. So it really helps guide and shape decisions on when to allow annexations, when a property owner requests it, what type of land use that land might be best suitable for, based on a number of factors that we'll touch on here in just a moment. And now if you can cycle to the next slide. What we try to use all this information for in this guiding document, it's, it's a long-range plan, though we've got short-term growth. We need to know what to do in the next three to five years. That's really a large part of the town's capital improvement plan. This document helps guide and shape how we go about doing that. And so you can see our, our plan slogan that we've identified through our Plan Steering Committee is "If Vision for Tomorrow With Solutions for Today." We really think that that's true in this document. And we're going to show you a careful thing. Go ahead and advance the next slide. Thank you. We're going to really show you what that does here in just the next couple of slides. What we wanted to share real quickly, this is just me, what the plan doesn't do. The comprehensive plan does not change the town's current boundaries. That's a different process that comes later on the road upon the request of property owners. It doesn't change the underlying zoning. That's a different document. Our zoning regulations are completely separate from the comprehensive plan. The plan just identifies a future vision for what it could be. And the comprehensive plan does not require development to occur. It's just a guide for if development is going to occur, where, when, and how that's likely to happen. Again, it's a guiding document. So what we do explain to property owners and to, to our citizens. These types of changes that we say that the comprehensive plan doesn't do really only happens upon requests. Annexation requests, property owners, when they want to change their land, we can consider that the town can consider that on a case-by-case basis at the time that request is made. Same is true for zoning and rezoning and conditional uses that are land or property-specific. Those happen upon request. That's when the town will consider those. And development requests, the town doesn't say this is what we're going to do. Development is really a private matter. Property owners, developers, businesses come to the town and say, this is what we do. This is what we would like to do and where we'd like to do it. Does that fit within the town's overall plan or comprehensive plan? And that's when we start working with developers to figure out if, when, and where their project can be successful. So, and we have a great example of that on the agenda later tonight. So that's what the plan does and does not do. And that's where I want to kind of wrap up my piece of this, and I want to hand it over to Liz Young Winnie, who's going to talk about the plan and its development.
Hi, everyone, and thanks, Cody, for passing it off. I wanted to just touch base. We don't have a ton of time to really dive into this timeline in detail. But I think there's a couple of things that are really important for everyone to note. The first is that this information is also on the comprehensive plan's website. So if you do want to dig into the deadline, to the timeline a little bit more, you can easily access that online on the town's website. The second thing that Cody already actually mentioned was that the plan development started over a year ago in, in January 2020. So in the end, the whole process will end up being roughly 15 months, which could seem kind of long, but it's pretty typical. And many comprehensive plan updates can take even upwards of two years. We're currently in phase three. You can see on the slide, kind of off to the side, it's got a little bubble of, we're here. And this, this phase is really important, and we're excited to hear everybody's feedback. It's the time when we release the draft plan to solicit comments and feedback, and then we use that information to draft the final plan. The process then concludes in a couple of months with the decision to formally adopt the plan. As the plan moves forward after that point in time, it continues to be assessed and updated. And it's really more of a living document than something that's static. And with that, I think I'm passing it off to Emily.
Great. Thank you. And hello, everyone. Like Liz mentioned, we're, we're being mindful of the time, so I will. I will try to present all, all the community feedback we've received so far. But again, on the website, we have summaries of the, the two engagement phases that we've had so far. And they, they lay out everything from the, you know, the timeline, the methods used, the responses that we received, the people that participated. So people meaning like, kind of like age and, and location in the town, no, no confidential information, of course. But just to give you a very quick summary, so during phase one, we had a few engagement activities, like you see on the screen. So the bottom left, those were some of the, those are photos from the stakeholder meetings that we had in person, like Cody explained, this started, the process started in January. So at that time, we had the opportunity to meet with folks in person, and it was great. We had a very good turnout. 61 people that came to a Leaper Center and we, you know, we, we had great conversations with them. And then we, part of first engagement phase, we also had social media notices. We had inserts that we, that we distributed at the library with the help of, of library staff, of course. They would include them in, in books. Every time anyone checked out a book, we also had posters at the library. And all these different touchpoints were directing people to a questionnaire that we had online, as well as a series of quick polls. Then for phase two, if we could move to the next slide, thanks. For phase two, it was slightly similar, though at this time Cody, COVID had hit. So we were not able to meet with people in person, but we, we continued to have a lot of digital engagement, social media posts and directing people to, to participate online. We also had on the, on the far right, those circles that you see there. I hope that some of the people that are listening to us tonight got to see these distributed at some of the local business, businesses like restaurants and bars. These were coasters that, as you can see, they had a QR code and would direct people to some quick polls that we had online. And we received excellent, there was excellent participation. This, despite not being able to see people online, people continued to be very, very engaged. Sorry, despite not being able to see people in person, people continued to be very engaged online, and that was, that was excellent. There was also an information card that got included and the, during the Halloween trick-or-treat event, and again, was directing people to more questioners online. So for phase three, some of the things that you can expect, and we'll move to the next slide. And, and some of this was already mentioned. So for phase three, you can expect that there will be an online platform. It's, we've already posted this on, on the, the town's Facebook page, and there will be other messages coming out in the next weeks just to engage people in going to this online review platform where they can look at the, the plan document in its totality and, and and submit comments anywhere in the document. It's a very user-friendly platform. We'll show you that later today, how to, how to use it. So just, just to highlight, so yeah, so we had 61 in-person stakeholder interviews throughout all the different questioners and quick polls. We've had 660 responses. There's been 10 steering committee meetings, receiving excellent feedback from a very involved and committed steering committee who has helped us ensure that the plan fits the character of the community. There's been lots of participation on Facebook, people, you know, with likes and comments and shares. And so far, we've had the Ford Board of Trustees workshop presentations. Presentations, and that's also served with the Planning Commission. Okay, and then what we've heard, so this is, and I'll give you a time to, to read this for folks looking at the screen. And I might point out a few of these, but these were some of the community values that we heard from the community. The larger the fund, the more that, that word got, the more times that it was repeated. So as you can see here, what, what the Wellington community values the most is the small-town charm. Also, the local-friendly businesses, the family-friendly atmosphere, the safety, and, and agricultural land, open space and views. And there are a few other things. There's many things that the community value about, about Wellington. I'll, I'll go to the next slide. Yeah, so we also asked the community what they were hoping to, to have, or what they were hoping Wellington to be in the next 20, in the next, in the next years. In the next 20 years. And as you can see, similar to that first, to the values, they, they want to preserve that town character that they, they value so much. They also want the town to be self-sufficient, to be sustainable, to be safe, to be distinct, and to diversified business, to have diversified businesses, and to enhance parks and open space. And a few other things. And so throughout the, the community engagement, we really asked the community many questions. We asked them about opportunities and challenges for downtown, for commercial areas, for parks and recreation, for transportation, including trails and sidewalks, also for community amenities and water conservation, and overall quality of life. And again, because of time constraints tonight, I'm not able to share detail, the detailed feedback that we've got, but we encourage you to go to the website. The link is at the top of the slide there. And on the website, you will see that we have a, a copy of the engagement summaries for phase one and phase two, and you'll be able to see all the engagement received in detail. I will also talk to you about the plan's foundation and organization. So the community vision and, and, and community pillars, and I'll show you those soon after, after this slide. These were the, 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 kind of like the foundational elements that helped guide everything else in the plan. We made sure that all other elements in the plan were were responding or contributing to this community vision and community pillars. And these were developed with, with a community feedback that we got from the community during phase one. And then during phase two, we also put it out there to the community to say, this is what we heard. Did we get it right or not? And even at this stage, we'll continue to share those with you and to ask you to look at them, review them, and make sure that they are right and, and respond to the character of the community. So again, those, those are the, the, kind of like the things that guide the whole document. And here, here is the community vision. So our friendly and supportive community welcomes you with a smile. Together, we take pride in celebrating and protecting our town character and values while welcoming forward-thinking ideas that enhance our health and well-being. Our dreams take root and blossom in Wellington. So there are also four community pillars that address these, these things that, these items, community pride, vibrant and historic downtown, thriving economy, sustainable, and resilient public services. And these are, these, these are in each of these following slides. Because of time constraints, I may not read them in detail yet, but I just wanted to point out, if you could quickly go back to a previous slide, sorry, Megan. So that very first slide, the community pride, what we addressed there is housing, parks and recreation, and community events. So when you look at the plan and you go through this section, you will see that we're showing a lot of, you know, we're Wellingtonis today in respect to these three elements, and the challenges and opportunities and, and goals and strategies for, for this one pillar. And for the next one, it's all about downtown, because we know that downtown is a key part of the Wellington community. And it's a key part of planning for the future of Wellington as well, for businesses and for, for vibrancy in the town. And then the next one is all about economy. That's pretty straightforward. And the last one, it addresses facilities and programs and transportation. And because transportation is really, I mean, it, it impacts the plan overall, you'll see how, yeah, so transportation, this, this general transportation section will touch on, you know, sidewalks and trails that really impact, you know, where we live. So housing and parks and also impact downtown. So this is, this one is one that's there. It's all encompassed in, in a way. With that, I pass it on to Megan.
So in regards to the bulk of the document, you've got a sort of goals and then strategies. And the goals really illustrate a desired future ideal deal. So it's kind of setting the stage, building off the vision and pillars that Emily just talked about. And then the strategies, they outline kind of a, a path of action to get to that goal. And these things are what staff uses in addition to the map itself, but also uses a lot of this text narrative to be able to compare development spittles as they come in and make sure they're hitting these goals and strategies, make sure they're aligning with the ideas that are in the plan. This is only one example of how the goal and strategies tier within the document itself. But like Emily said, you'll see one for each of those four pillars in some detail below.
All right, thank you. So this is Cody Bird again, Planning Director. Then one of the big components of the comprehensive plan that we wanted to kind of highlight in this presentation tonight is the future land use map. The future land use map is a tool. It's part of the comprehensive plan, and it's really used to kind of guide those, those future land uses, hence the name. It also identifies the growth management area that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. If you could cycle to the next, actually, we're going to pull up a different, this is pretty small, so is there the larger version that we can share? Just a sec. So the, the, what you'll see on the, on the map here, once we pull it up again. There, there's a bold boundary around the very perimeter. There we go. And that is the town's proposed growth management area. There we go. Thank you. You'll notice that that's quite a bit larger than the, the town's current boundaries, the municipal city limits. That's a little hard to read on this scale, but it's, it's kind of clustered around the existing development that you know today. The growth management area was originally adopted with the, the first comprehensive plan, and it's had some, some tweaks to it over the years. What we've tried to do is really maintain the existing growth management area that was adopted in 2014. But you can see there's a couple of areas that have some black crosshatching. And those are areas that are new to the growth management area that we're proposing in the plan for the 2021 comprehensive plan. Those areas, we're really trying to just kind of square off the boundary to anticipate where the future growth and development may occur, as well as to preserve some of the open space agricultural amenities that are existing today that we feel are important for the community to maintain its agricultural and cultural heritage, as well as to preserve those existing land uses that benefit the community today. So this is a little bit different than the 2014 comprehensive plan. The 2014 plan really kind of identified a strategic goal and vision as being to reach Al Canyon Road, Canyon Road 70 for future commercial purposes. And although our, our staff and the comments that we received from, from the public and from our Plan Steering Committee, we still believe that that is a, an important goal for the town to reach that point someday. But we largely believe that that growth is going to occur naturally. And you can see that it's nearly three miles from the current town limits to that interchange at I-25 and County Road 70. That's an awfully long way to extend public infrastructure and utilities to, to service that area. And a far more logical path for development to want to occur and, and a direction that is more manageable for the town to provide municipal services is to allow that growth to occur to the south. Is to allow that growth to occur to the south. One of the other kind of key objectives of of this plan is to. It acknowledges of the fact that Fort Collins is growing to the north. There's other communities to our southern boundary as well as constraints on the west with irrigation reservoirs. And to the east with floodplain and state-owned wildlife habitat. Our southern boundaries are very constrained, and that's why you see it taper so much to the south. But that's a very strategic area for for the town of Wellington to identify for its future growth. County Road 58 likely wants to support commercial development where there could be a potential future interchange on I-25. As well as capitalizing on potential sales tax revenues from Fort Collins residents. If we are able to develop commercially at the County Road 58 and State Highway one intersections. Where residents of northern Fort Collins may find it easier and faster to come to Wellington to get goods and services. And Wellington would benefit from that additional commercial traffic. So that's that's a pretty significant change from the prior comprehensive plan based on what we know today for for Wellington. We also expect that Highway one is going to become a a commercial corridor. It's the one of the only north-south corridors through town and it's an arterial roadway. A type of of corridor attracts businesses because of the traffic counts, the visibility, the access. And we know that we have a high school under construction in that corridor. And growth and development really likes to cluster around schools, public schools because of the. The traffic counts for businesses, access to those businesses for high school students. For open lunches and the businesses benefit from that as well. So we we really anticipate that the some of the decisions that have been made to to this point are really going to drive that corridor. For potential future development for commercial purposes. We do specifically have a section on the downtown. It's pretty small on this scale map. But the downtown is identified in our future land use categories as a unique and distinct. District different from our other land use categories. And we're going to touch on a couple of those in just a minute. But this this kind of map is very long-range looking and just paints with a really broad brush. As the town grows and develops, these are the areas that are logically primed for certain types of growth. Commercial, as we mentioned, the long major arterial roadways. Industrial and light industrial uses tend to cluster where there's good highway access, railroad access. And we have both of that on the north and east portion of of the community here in our future growth areas. The red areas are our future commercial areas, again, poised primarily along major roadways. And then you see with a very broad brush, some of the yellows and oranges are identified as. Low-density residential and medium-density residential for the population growth that Wellington expects we will see in the in the coming years. So that's kind of the the future land use map at a glance. There's a little more detail in there and there's supporting pages in the draft comprehensive plan. That further identify what those colors mean for the land use categories and what types of uses are expected there. We're going to, we don't want to cover every one of them tonight, but we wanted to give you kind of a glimpse of how those are structured. So Megan, would you be willing to explain the medium-density residential category?
Oh, no, I have to go back through. Give me one second. Okay, so the medium-density residential category, this is. This is building on some of the public comment that we heard early on in the process. To bring more of a diversity of homes than the town currently has, the town's current. Housing stock is really mostly single-family detached units. And in early conversations with folks, they mentioned the need to, you know, be able to retire here. So they're looking for more of like a patio home or a town home that they can leave and then not have to worry about the yard when they come back. And also to look at some more rental opportunities or smaller-scale homes that allow downsizing. Allow for for more folks to be able to afford and buy in here and then stay in the town of Wellington. So a couple of different ends of the spectrum there, young folks, you know, trying to get into the housing market in Wellington versus older folks that are trying to stay. In the housing stock in Wellington. On so on that note, knowing that, you know, in order to support some of these newer commercial nodes that Cody just mentioned. There's the ability to to kind of surround some of those commercial nodes with this medium density. Density is not a big jump from what the city or with town already has in place. The lower end of that density range is about a six and that accommodates my single-family detached house that I'm in in Fort Collins. So there is a wide range of housing types and products that can fit into this anywhere from six to 12. So you can be looking at typical single-family detached units. Townhouse houses duplex, the little kind of bungalow courts that you have a number of townhomes kind of surrounding a shared park system. Anything from, you know, two-story condos, townhouses. To things like mixed use where you've got retail on the bottom and apartment type or condo type uses on the top. So a lot of different products tend to tend to fit this. And it's just trying to kind of reflect that sensitivity to allow more diversity within town. To reach a little bit more of that diversity of the market and folks that are looking for housing up here to stay and to come in the area. And then in regards to next steps, so the comprehensive plan, the public review draft is ready to go. And there are the digital site that I can go to in a second here and kind of give you a sneak preview of. And there's also some in-person copies at Library and Town Hall and Cody and Liz can correct me if they're there now or they will be expected to be there tomorrow. The overall public review period, so this was kind of that that. Just that soundbite here to get everybody interested and go to the website or go to those in-person drafts and comment there. The comment there allows us to to collect all of that comment and to be able to respond to those comments directly in the next version. This is really, I think Cody or Liz mentioned it upfront, this is really what the comprehensive plan process is about. Getting something out to the public and having that comment come back to us to make it an even better document. So the overall public review period, we're looking to about mid-April to close that out so we can take a look and see what we've gotten. And make some revisions and go back through the process with Steering Committee. And then be able to to revise the draft and come forward for the adoption process. For more details, I know Emily, Cody and Liz have already mentioned the town of Wellington, the webpage. So you'll find additional information there in regards to outreach summaries. And Facebook as well has the opportunity to direct you into the website and into the comprehensive plan public review. Let's see if I can make this work. Or not. Oh, there it goes. So, and I hope you're seeing this. Thumbs up, Liz. No, darn it. Okay, let me switch over. All right, so the the public draft plan, as mentioned, is available on Convayio. It is interactive, so you'll get this welcome screen. There's a lot of instruction up front that I'm not going to read right now, just going to dig right into the document. But basically, what you have the ability to do is scroll through the pages on screen here. You have the ability to click basically anywhere on this page and leave a comment. Name, email and add comment, and that is posted. The nice thing about this review document is that once a comment is left, other folks have the ability to kind of like or dislike or comment on that comment. And everybody's kind of able to see those responses within here as they go. And then the only, the only other thing to know really is that if you need to, if you feel the need to download, you have the ability to do that as well. And download the draft as well to review on your own time. But we are hoping that folks are able to comment within the document. And we will, we'll plan to monitor and then take a look and and download all those comments as a new summary in April.
Thanks, Megan. And just kind of wanted to reiterate, as we're wrapping up here. Appreciate everyone sticking with this. I know this was a little bit long, but we feel it's a it's a pretty important document for the community. We wanted to make sure we gave it the attention due. As as Megan mentioned, this platform called Convayio is on the town's website and it's it's open for public comment. I want to stress that this this is the official platform and location for the town to receive. Public input, comments and feedback on the draft plan. This allows us to monitor all of the comments that are made and address those in a pretty, pretty efficient manner. Social media in its various forms are not being monitored for public comments regarding this comprehensive plan. So we really encourage everyone to use this platform. We, for those that might not be able to to access this due to internet availability or et cetera. We will have paper copies available at Town Hall and at the library. Those paper copies need to stay there. We're not printing individual copies to be distributed for people to take home and review. One of our concerns is that when we have too many versions floating around out there and we start making revisions, people are no longer looking at the current version. So this format's going to stay online during the public review period. Paper copies are available, but they need to stay in place at the library at Town Hall. If you need other special accommodations, we encourage you to contact the town planning and development department staff. And we can assist you with any individual needs that you might have. So that pretty well concludes our presentation for the evening. Unless any of the other presenters feel like I forgot something. We really just want to thank everyone for the time and hope that you enjoy reviewing the draft plan.
Thank you all for the presentation. Really looking forward to the interaction that people are going to be able to participate in on the website. And load it up with as many comments as it can. I wanted to ask real quick if any trustees had any quick remarks or comments they'd like to bring up this time for this. Sounds like there's still a few more meetings to go. And you're going to get plenty of opportunities to to do that as well. So, you know, if you have something that you want to point out immediately, might be good right now, but. There's going to be, I think, plenty of other opportunities as well. So I'll turn it over to the board. Anybody wants to say something?
I just wanted to reiterate that the the website and that we were just looking at is the best place to put the comments. So they're consolidated. And you can see if there's a lot of agreement, disagreement or whatever that you might be commenting. This process has been so wonderful and this product that we're looking at right now is so professional and and took everything together. So thank you guys so much for your work on this. I know it's been a lot of work. I appreciate it. It looks wonderful.
Thank you, trustee Kenny.
Trustee Yer.
Yep. So I did want to start and I do appreciate the work that staff and Logan Simpson have put into this. I know it's been a long process. We've had quite a lot that's gone into this. So I do appreciate the work and it is a very professional document. I do agree with that. I do have some very major concerns with what we've been presented here. So I. The first concern that I have is that I don't feel like this document really reflects Wellington. It feels to me that there is a thought process of what this document should look like. And then there's been pieces of what the community has said that have been input into that here and there. I also have concerns about the feedback that's been given and how that's been addressed. I will point to one specific area that's incredibly concerning to me. Is there was a portion in the draft that was originally presented to the Steering Committee that discussed diversity. And there was portions that went into detail about a specific population group not being represented in town boards and. Town affairs, basically insinuating that there's a racism problem. And that was brought up by half of the Steering Committee that that was not an appropriate thing to be in our our comprehensive plan. Then I I actually brought this to the board with my concern with moving forward because this is. I had concerns moving through the process, but seeing the actual first document, I was asked not to share those concerns because it wasn't public. It's now public. My hope was that those would be addressed. Not only were those issues not addressed, they were actually expanded further. To the point where it was basically said that the town needed to ensure that minorities were able to serve on our town boards, which has. Representing probably the smallest minority in the town of Wellington is incredibly offensive to me. To be implied that the only way that I can serve on a town board is with government assistance, that I am not capable or qualified to do so on my own. The other concern that I have is we have one racial group that is consistently called out throughout this plan while several others are ignored. So the first issue I have with this is I don't feel that this is an issue in Wellington. I, as a minority, I can say, I don't believe we have a racial problem here. To me, by putting this in the document, this is working to create or potentially causing the potential to create a problem that does not exist today. And by leaving out other minority groups, we're going to become a problem where it's like, well, why did you highlight this minority group and not this minority group? Why not this minority group? And it creates a chain that just continues. So that is my concern. And the bigger concern is that this was brought up by the Steering Committee. And not only was it not removed by the consultants, they actually took and expanded on it and put it even more throughout the document it was in the first place. So the concern that I have is that we're giving feedback. There are several items in here that I have never heard from members of the community, we've never discussed in the Steering Committee that are now part of our plan. And so I have some major concerns with what we were presented. And so I, hopefully that can be addressed, but at very least, the diversity portion, I believe that needs to be changed. Immediately to simply be the data, you know, we don't, I don't want opinions or other people's opinions of what the data means. Just put the data there and leave it alone. I have other concerns. One of the things is with growth. I understand that Dola says that we're expecting a certain growth rate. One of the concerns that I have is that unless I'm incorrect, I don't believe there's a law that says we have to abide by Dola's expected growth rate for our town. I think we get to set that. So it's a little concerning to me that rather than taking into effect what I've heard from many citizens, they'd prefer us to stay a smaller town. That we're planning towards, okay, we're going to see this 6% growth rate. We're, we are the ones that actually get to set that. So that's also a lesser concern to me, but it is a little bit of a concern as well that we're. Planning for a higher level of growth when I don't hear that from the community members that that's what they want to see. So I will leave it at those. Those are kind of the major things, but I just, I do have some major concerns with the. I understand COVID made things difficult, but I don't feel like we. I don't feel that this document represents our community and that concerns me quite a bit.
I think in documents like this, we should focus on describing the community that we're trying to build and not the people necessarily. That are in our community. So that the the comment specifically to race stood out to me as well in the comp plan. I don't feel like it represented other diversity classifications, like it doesn't talk anything about inclusivity for. Transgender or the gay population or. Age differences or diversity with cultures. It really just kind of focused on that one race. So my preference would be to not talk about it at all. Let's talk about our community and defining small-town charm instead of the people that we want to. Try and. Describe that live in our community. Does that make sense?
Sure. Any other thoughts? Trustee White Alice, any thoughts?
Yeah, this is quite a comprehensive document, no pun intended. I mean, it's. I'm impressed. It is, it does look very professional. Clearly, a whole lot of work went into this. And I mean, I've only read it one and a half times and I have to say. It's not sufficient. There's a lot of meat in here. And I I I, again, I'm I'm quite impressed. And I I think they're reevaluating whether we're heading north or heading south. I mean, that's pretty much news to me. Yeah, it's good to hear and it's good to start this discussion with public and to get through. I mean, this is an important phase, so. I think we're at a good place to start and I I look forward to seeing, you know, the public engagement on this and refining this. You know, the public engagement on this and, uh, refining this. So, yeah, I think it's a great process.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Okay. All right. Uh, real quick, I appreciate the comments that were brought. Appreciate the comments brought up, uh, taken to heart myself. I do agree. A lot of what you said, both of you and, and yourself. I did talk to steering committee members. Some of them thought the process was great. Some of them had the same concerns you had. So this evaluation process here now, doesn't that give us the opportunity to strike this stuff that we don't like, right? I mean, that's what this is going to do. And we're going to hammer it away. I mean, you can either do it on the website, they do, or we can. You know, uh, use some other means and methods, but I think that, uh, that gives us the opportunity, several opportunities to. Clean some of this up, if you will, right? That's what I'd see. I think that's.
Yes, I, I would agree with you, Mayor. I, my hope is that and my hope is that to the consultants that. What I saw would happen with that specific issue from the first draft to this draft will not happen with our public's comments that are given to the document from here. So I expect to see if the community brings up concerns that changes happen from that. That's something I will personally be watching very carefully to see, because as the mayor said, this is our document. This, and if we say that we want it different, I expect that to happen.
Trustee McDonald.
I just had a quick question about how, what would be the preferred method for us to give our feedback? Would you recommend we use the, um, survey on the website or would you like it from us directly? How would staff like to capture the feedback?
From the, from the board?
From the board.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah. And, and that's a great question. Uh, if you're comfortable leaving those comments on the public, uh, review document, that would be acceptable. If you don't feel comfortable doing that, please reach out to me directly and I can, uh, take your questions and distribute that to our team to, to review and, and. Input that into the comprehensive plan.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. You do both. You both. I encourage you all to go through it and. Take away at it. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll be getting in touch. I know we got a lot of rounds to go. Looking forward to the public. Time that we're going to give. I think we're going to give a good amount of time here in a couple of weeks, I hope, to the public to come in and really weigh in on it as well. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and move along and open up. The public comment portion of this meeting tonight.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, board. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, folks, very much. One more one, another public comment. Uh, this is the, the point where the public can, uh, come in and address the board on non-agenda items. As, uh, this is a non-agenda item tonight as well. You can weigh in on that. You'll get three minutes during the public comment. Uh, when you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record and, uh. We'd love to hear from you. So we'll, uh, take an orderly approach and wait, raise your hands if you like and. Come on up and then we'll go to the Zoom after the in-person.
Christine Gator, 8132 Fourth Street. I have three recommendations to add to the comp plan. The first one is a glossary in the back defining the terms. Such as active transportation, prime prevention through environmental something. Tax incremental financing. These are words that I had to look up while I was reading through the comprehensive plan. And how do you expect, um, citizens to comment if they don't understand the words? The next thing is a field when we write our name and our, um, email and our comment is, uh, maybe the neighborhood that we live in. Because, um. I believe it's the most fair thing for the people that live in the neighborhood to decide what happens to their own neighborhood. It is not fair for someone in Buffalo Creek to decide what happens in my neighborhood, the downtown neighborhood. Um, it is not fair for the Pheasant Run neighborhood that only has 15 houses. If the majority say they want that commercial, that's not fair to them. The third thing is I would like Logan Simpson to add citations for each of their goals, connecting it to a community comment so that. We know that, uh, someone actually wanted that goal. And then any goal that did not have any community comment on should be removed from the plan. As you said, it's our community plan. It's not their plan for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nelson, you coming up?
Good evening, Wendell Nelson. I hadn't planned to come and I didn't know you were talking about this tonight. It's nice to see you. Did surprise me because 15 years ago I sat in this room and we were talking about a comprehensive plan. And I think some of the folks here were there. We worked at it. The things I would consider, keep it simple. Realize that you have Old Town. That you want to keep the characteristics of the old community. But you've got a big part of the town that's growing. And you're not going to constrain that by Ky Road. Seven or wherever. We live just south, a few miles south, right in the corner of 58 and 9. We, one of the things that you have to figure out is transportation routes in and around the town. We see. A lot of cars going by our farm now. When we first moved there, we see three or four a day. Now we see three or four a minute. So. Growth and development of Ky Road nine coming down through because that's a direct route. Coming into the eastern part of the town. You've got Highway one coming down. And you have to have access. To the east. Or the highway. Because you have three, 30,000 vehicles coming by here a day. And a lot of those want to come into town, but they can't get, they have a tough time getting in here. And that's where a lot of the small businesses, we got, I came up and taught coffee shops. But a lot of these people coming off the highway are going to support coffee shops and other small businesses in town. 15 years ago, we were talking about the comprehensive plan. That's before there was even the Main Street program. The chamber was in its infancy. So we've seen a lot of growth, but you're going to realize that Old Town is not going to look like Old Town. And you've got to have good transportation through these different groups as they develop. The high school going in, you're going to see a lot of activity. My gut feeling is you're going to develop west of the high school. Families coming into town that want to be close to high school. So that'd be potentially growing that way. You're going to have commercial developments around here in different areas. So. Transportation routes are critical. The 58 bridge and the, uh, over the highway with a potential access. And I'm out of town at time probably, but, uh. These are all things that. You need to really consider along with what's going on in the community of how many six, uh, multifamily, family worth versus. Single family. In that unit, you've got to have some continuity, but these other issues can override that. So thank you for this opportunity. I'll talk to my bar coffee shop in a minute.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
My name is Brian Misha. I live in the Knowles down at 6995 Mount Democrat Street. I just had a couple of issues I wanted to bring up real quick. I feel that the process that this document has come into existence is a blow towards the representativeness of our government. I appreciated the mayor's comments earlier that we can change it as we like, strike the stuff we don't like, make this document our own, but. I fear that by default, without a Herculean effort, documents like this will simply pass into existence and adoption because. Because we've paid so much for it, because, uh, it's so much work to change the framework. I worry that we'll get simply a framework that was given us to. With the exception of very minor changes from community feedback. And in general, I, I worry about, um. The safety of continuing with such a process where we, we farm out documents like this to some third-party corporation that was paid a ton of money. And then we just by default end up having to, to live with it. Uh, the second thing I'd like to mention is to the zoning situation here. I see, I see far too much control over the city with regards to the, the ridiculous number of different zoning types that there were when. We can't pretend to predict what's going to happen. We should leave it to the free market. Uh, if history teaches us anything, it's that. Centrally planned economies do not survive at scale and this town will be at scale in these days. So best to leave future generations the freedom of having simply a residential zone and a commercial zone. Instead of medium residential and smaller res, and, and low density residential and high density, we should not presume to control it. We should let the market decide what's going to happen by reducing the number of zoning types that we permit the government to have under their control.
Thank you, sir. Good points. Anyone else?
My name is Hannah Misha, also at 6995 Mount Democrat Street. First off, I wanted to express some appreciation to the board. I realize you guys kind of work a pretty thankless job. You have to make hard calls, do unpopular things like, like with all the water and stuff. And I know that's not a good time. So I do want to say, I do appreciate what you guys do for us and the hours that you put in. First and foremost. I do plan to go through and comment throughout the entirety of the comprehensive plan, but just a couple of things that did stick out to me. Like my husband said, please don't get into the sunk cost fallacy. Don't commit to a mistake just because you spent a lot of time and money making it. You know, that's why we end up having to like stick out crappy relationships and things like that as we put all the time and it, it just never works out in the long run. You don't want to. Get stuck with something that people hate because you spent however many thousands of dollars on it. So, um, please be sensitive to the feedback that you receive. Secondly, like Chris said, or sorry, I just called you by your brother's name. Um, like trustee Gator said. I do not appreciate this paragraph about inclusivity. I have been working as an advocate and care provider for the disabled community for over 10 years. I have, uh, worked in the public school system and as a Medicaid waiver service provider. And I have an invisible, an invisible disability as well. So this part about ensuring more diversity in the voices and strategically targeting people. Really sits badly with me because I don't want to be strategically targeted by anyone. That's, that sounds scary. And minorities, especially disabled people, really just want to be treated like everyone else. I don't need your help making my voice heard. I'm here. I can speak in front of you. Um, this, we don't need this paragraph. If anything, replace this with something that says oppose legislation that negatively affects the disabled. Or just get rid of it entirely. This is really unnecessary. It just calls people out in a humiliating and weird way and makes it weird. Uh, I also have every intention of opening a family recreational business in Wellington someday. I own a small company. Keeping taxes and regulations low is going to do a lot more to help me than having this awkward language in the town plan. We don't necessarily need this. And, uh. I do like that Christine suggested that, um, every part of the plan should be linked to a public comment. I think that's a great idea. The final point I'd like to leave you with is if you end up going the wrong direction, the person who turns back first is making the most progress. So. Don't be afraid to change things up if it comes down to that's what the community wants. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Robin Johnson at 7985 Pheasant Run Lane. My husband and I have been in Wellington for about 15 years. We've seen it grow. And one of the biggest concerns that we've had is definitely the roads and transportation. We have been seeing a major increase of traffic volume. And since I drive over the overpass several times a day, I also see pedestrians walking there. I see middle school students walking across. That's one of my biggest concerns of people crossing the freeway. So it's definitely a major concern I have. How can we work this in to? To help people get across to make it not the west side of Wellington and the east side of Wellington of. The freeway, but make it kind of more of a conclusive. City here and, um. I also have six children, so I'm very invested in this town. One concern I've always had is sidewalks. We don't always have great sidewalks or they just stop. So when I'm pushing my babies around, I have to gather them all up. And make sure they're not running in the streets. And then how are we working with the state of Colorado and, and with, um. With the roads, with the interstate, with, with that regard. Because we seem to be very forgotten up in northern Colorado and all their attention is in Denver. And how are we going to get that information or our concerns and actually move forward with some of these major passes and. Getting another exit ramp into Wellington and stuff like, how are we going to do that? Or are we going to have to end up footing the bill in that regard? And I think that is all. Thank you.
Good points. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close the public comment inside the chambers. We're going to go to Zoom.
Aaron, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Doesn't look like they're responding. We can move on to Michael Clark if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Michael. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, I, uh, I just, one of my biggest concerns was. Did anybody ever ask how much do the citizens of Wellington want to grow? I, you know, I know what our projected rate is, but do we have to grow at that rate? Can we stay smaller? Uh, I see a lot of stuff in the plan about, uh, higher density housing and. You know, all that kind of stuff. And, uh, I understand affordability for folks, but maybe. Some smaller houses rather than things like apartments and condos and stuff. Would help to maintain the character of the town. And also help to slow the growth a little bit rather than putting in these jumbo, uh, apartment complexes and things like that. Uh, so that's just a thought. I would hate to see this town, you know, at, um, 20, 30, 40,000 honestly, because. Just like the section where they showed the, the, the most common comments with the bigger fonts. A lot of people were talking about that small town charm and the safety and all of those things. And. The fact of the matter is when you get a bigger population. You lose those things and there's nothing that you can do to preserve them. So I think that. Preserving those things that people love might have something to do more with throttling the amount of growth that we allow to happen in our town. I, uh, I also took note of the stuff that was said about minorities and uh, and you know, while I'm not a minority, I happen to be a white man. I am a veteran and I often get the same kinds of stuff that, that minorities and disabled people end up hearing is, you know, we want to uh, make sure that, that, you know, these, these people have the opportunity and all of this kind of stuff. Well, I make my opportunity wherever I go. And uh, and I don't, I don't need anybody's help. Uh, and, and you know, just to add to that, I'm a disabled veteran. And uh, I, I don't need people making opportunities for me. Uh, and if somebody is Hispanic or Asian or black or whatever, and they run for a uh, town board, board of trustees, any of those things. I think that they're gonna get just as good of a shot to, to earn that position as anybody else would. Uh, and uh, you know, I, I look at Trustee Gator as a perfect example of that. Um, he does a phenomenal job. And uh, he got that, uh, that position and I believe that he'll maintain his position based on merit. And that's what we need to be looking for. People who, based on merit, will get these positions and, and uh, hold them by earning the respect of the people in the town. Not because we said, oh, we don't have enough of this kind of person. That's, that's just where divisiveness comes from. And if we want a unified town, then we need to ignore people's skin colors and sexual orientations and all that stuff. And just look at them for who they are as a person. By their merits and by what they choose to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Next, we have Kathy White Dallas. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me? Cause I didn't, I didn't test my microphone. I got here right at six thirty. Okay, I'm Kathy White Dallas. Three, four, zero, five Revere Court. It's the Viewpoint neighborhood, south of Jefferson and west of the railroad tracks. And I uh, I didn't have a chance to read the entire thing. I got about halfway through. And I uh, I have agreed with, with everybody that's spoken. I, I saw, thought it was a very pretty, almost glitzy presentation of, of uh, you know, for this plan. But some of the language didn't sound very serious about dreams blossoming and things like that. I'm just going, what? And then of other things, like even in the vision, I don't see it where it's Wellington's responsibility to enhance my health and well-being. I, you know, I, I, that's my job. That's, that's not the town's job. And I don't think it's the town job to enhance anybody's health and well-being. That's, that's personal responsibility. The whole diversity thing has been gone over multiple times by people of more diverse backgrounds than me, although my family has always said we're just a bunch of mutts because there's probably nothing that is not in our background, but there's um, yeah, it's, it just, I don't think that's something that's a, a problem in Wellington. And our problem is getting anybody to volunteer for some of these boards and to run for things. So I would agree with just, just disregarding that part completely. It also kind of smacks of one of these, um, this affirmative furthering fair housing thing that came up in one of the previous administrations where the federal government wanted to insist that neighborhoods have quotas basically of who lives there, what type of housing is there? And that would be turning over our, our uh, our own responsibility to the federal government. And I really object to that. So anyhow, I'm, I'm looking forward to going and making comments. I'm glad there's an interactive uh, a website. But uh, this may have been a, this is probably a typo, but it was kind of a Freudian slip for me. On the page thirteen in the plan or page fifty-five on the uh, in the packet, there's a map and it shows a bunch of parks. And it calls one of the parks Boulder Creek Trail or something like that. And it's Box Elder Creek. So you might want to fix that right off because as I read it, the picture of Boulder kept going through my head anyway about, you know, with all the green talk and the diversity stuff and all that. So um, I think Wellington's a lot more practical place. And that's how we should write our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next.
Next, we have Melanie Murphy. If you could unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Melanie Murphy. I live at thirty-five eighty-four Polk Circle East.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for allowing me to speak. For those of you that are unfamiliar with who I am or what I'm about, I am the name and face of the group Prosperous Wellington. We are about responsible cannabis, cannabis reform in the town of Wellington. I understand and appreciate that the board has taken the time to clean up the wording to get this issue ready for the ballot. The reason I am here tonight is to ask when we are going to be able to vote on this issue. I realize it was supposed to have been last November. Things happened. That didn't happen as we can tell. Here we are. Now I'm hearing that it could be the following November. I'm just curious why we're waiting really, especially after just hearing that presentation. I myself have lived in this town for almost seventeen years come this July. This is the only town my twins have ever known. They went to elementary and middle school here. I'm actually sitting in the parking lot at Pooter High School right now, waiting on my cheerleader. I've been in the Wellington Waverly Qantas Club since it was chartered. I volunteer for Main Streets. I volunteer for the CAC. I volunteer at the elementary schools. I'm on the board for my HOA. I'm very, very active in my community. I also help at the food bank when I can and at the Boys and Girls Club when I was able as well. I see the need in this town for us to be able to vote on this issue. As I said, especially with just listening to the presentation for the comprehensive plan, which I attended. I'm actually pictured in the phase one pictures. Kind of funny. I really think that we need to get on this, guys. With the cost of water, the town is getting upset. People are getting up in arms over how this has all gone down. I realize it's not this board, that it was the prior boards or whatnot. But people are starting to wonder what the town is going to do to help support its citizens. And with everything else that has just been brought up by the people that spoke before myself, including the comprehensive team, we need to be able to make the decision as a community whether or not we want to try and get this money, you guys. So I appreciate that you've done what you have up until this point and I really just would like to be able to vote on this sooner than later. I mean, I guess if we wait till November, it just gives me more time to campaign and talk to more people about it, get more people involved, which could be a bonus as well. But time is of the essence. This town needs this revenue. Patty Garcia just presented at Qantas last week and her point was revenue, revenue, revenue. Nobody else is making any sort of option or idea as to where we're gonna generate this revenue. This is my community. I'm not looking for it to go to pot, you guys. My kids live here. I'm highly invested in this. We need to be able to make this decision as a town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next.
Next, we have Roger and Barb Stoneford. You can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Roger and Barb.
Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay. My concern is similar to the speaker before. Uh, she, she didn't say an awful lot about it, but my concern is the extreme increase in our water rates. I, I feel like in the last two years, our water rates have almost doubled. And I, I realize that, that with growth in town, that the, that puts a lot more pressure on the water department. They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to increase equipment that they're using. They're gonna have to increase staff in order to produce clean water for, for our residents. But that can be done with bonds and grants. Don't, don't just tax, I, I, I look at it as a tax. Uh, and, and I don't, I don't like the tax increase. So I think there's better ways of approaching uh, funding the water department than increasing rates like they have been in the last actually in the last six months. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
We have none of their hands raised at this time.
Hey, we'll close the public comment at this time, bring it back to the board and resume our action on this. Good comments. Okay, item C consent agenda meeting minutes from the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one Board of Trustees meeting. Is there any issues with this? We need to be aware of? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Donald?
Yes.
Yes.
Kenutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, I M D one. It's a public hearing. It's ordinance number zero-three days twenty-twenty-one. It's conditional use for human being drive-through in the C-one zoning district at um, eighty-one twenty-one Sixth Street. Mr. Cody Bird.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Cody Bird, Planning Director here. Uh, as you mentioned, this, this next item is a public hearing. The public hearing uh, is for a conditional use request for a human being drive-through coffee shop. The conditional use is requested to allow a drive-through within the C-one Community Commercial District. Um, this item did go before the Planning Commission uh, earlier this month and the Planning Commission evaluated the conditional use uh, in a public hearing and also considered site plans uh, for the site uh, for development. And following the Planning Commission's uh, hearing on this matter and deliberations, um, the Planning Commission did recommend approval. The recommendation was unanimous. The conditional use request for the drive-through is the component that the board is considering tonight uh, as part of the Planning Commission's recommendation. Um, they did approve the site plan subject to board approval of the conditional use request. Uh, so if the board chooses to approve the conditional use for the drive-through, uh, then the site plans would also uh, carry through with the approval the Planning Commission gave. As by order of uh, explanation, uh, this is a public hearing matter. It does require the public uh, comment period. We've already, the board has already disclosed uh, ex parte communications and conflicts of interest. There were none cited for this case except for the um, one comment from Trustee Gator uh, regarding the attendance or hearing um, the Planning Commission meeting. Um, so there were no other conflicts stated. Um, Mayor, for a public hearing item, typically the staff will give a, a brief presentation. Uh, the applicant would also have an opportunity to share any additional comments or feedback that they would like to share for their development request. We would allow public comments and following the close of the public comment period, the applicant would have a chance to respond uh, to those comments. Staff would uh, provide any closing comments. And then we would turn it back over to the board for deliberations. Are there any questions regarding the public hearing process?
No.
Very good. Um, then just by way of a, of a uh, very quick introduction, the site that's proposed for the conditional use to allow a drive-through lane is uh, on Sixth Street uh, near the intersection of Cleveland and Sixth. Uh, the property is proposed to be developed for a human bean coffee shop. It's a drive-through coffee shop. Uh, this is just south of the O'Reilly Auto Parts store um, that has recently opened. The uh, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission heard this and recommended approval. The conditions uh, or the criteria that the Planning Commission evaluated are the same criteria that the board should evaluate and those are listed in your staff report. I won't go through those one by one. Um, but I will simply, uh, I'll respond to any questions that the board may have regarding those and the Planning Commission's recommendation. I will simply highlight that the primary concern that the Planning Commission had initially raised uh, was related to the traffic impacts of the site and the onsite circulation. Uh, I will say that the, the applicant, uh, Mr. Cassidy, who's on the, the call this evening representing uh, human bean and Ms. Shirley uh, also representing human bean, uh, their team has done a really uh, nice job working with town staff to address those traffic initial traffic concerns. The proposed site plan was completely reevaluated and uh, the access controls, uh, the proposed striping on Sixth Street um, and some onsite circulation details were all reevaluated to address those concerns and staff is comfortable with the recommendation uh, to approve. Um, and just really kudos to the Planning Commission for working through uh, the challenges with the site and for the human being and their team for uh, putting forward a really great effort to address the, the town's concerns. Um, I would, I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention that the uh, proposed uh, conditional use ordinance was included in the board's uh, packet this evening and that ordinance does include conditions of approval. Uh, those conditions of approval uh, included providing a striping plan uh, for restriping Sixth Street that the applicant would provide. Um, revising site plans in accordance with town staff comments. Those are very minor at this, at this point, but there are a couple of, of minor changes that need just to be reflecting the town's standard requirements. Um, and then uh, the site plan approval, as I mentioned, is conditioned upon the, the board's approval of the um, conditional use for the drive-through. Um, so that's the, the brief introduction to uh, this. I have the site plans available for view if we need to put those up on the screen. Uh, at this time, I'd stand for any quick questions from the board. And following that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cassidy and Ms. Shirley for any information they'd like to share for their project.
Any questions?
I have a few, but should those wait for later or should I bring them up now?
Oh, related to this subject, right?
Yeah.
Sure, why don't you just go ahead and go first. I'm, we'll just work around this way.
Um, so a real quick question. I know on the, the, one of the concerns with traffic was a lot on just what the trips would be. Do we know what the current trips are that we're seeing in that area during the peak times? I know there was a number given for what the expected peak traffic is, but where are we at currently? Do we have that information or can we get that?
Um, yeah, Trustee Gator, can you be a little more specific? Are you referring to the expected site trips generated for the proposed use? Are you referring to adjacent uses, traffic in general? What, what are you referring to that we can get for you?
No, absolutely. So to clarify, the question is, is I know, I, I think I understood in the document what was proposed is this is what we're going to see in terms of peak traffic brought in by the human being. I, maybe I'm reading it wrong. But my question is, is what are we at now? Without it there, what are we currently seeing in terms of traffic in that area already? Because then we're potentially adding, it sounds like additional trips to that. I don't know if the question makes sense.
Um, I, I think I follow what you're asking. You're, you're talking to, you're referring to what, what the industry would refer to as background traffic. How many vehicle trips are there on Sixth Street and Cleveland in that vicinity without the, the proposed new development? Is that a fair characterization? Okay, thank you for that question. Uh, we have those numbers. I will dig for those here in my documents uh, while we proceed and I'll circle back around to that.
That, that's perfect. And then the other quick question I had is have we, there was a very minor mention of noise concerns, but it didn't seem major, but have we heard anything from citizens from what's been sent out on the noise concerns? I think it was just about trash trucks or something coming through.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. Uh, thanks for the question. Um, we did identify in the staff report, the, as one of the review criteria, we evaluate what potential impacts from a, a noise standpoint, a new development may have uh, on this conditional use request. And so, so for example, And so, so for example, uh, on this conditional use, uh, for a drive-through, the anticipated additional noise generated by that would be idling vehicles in the drive-through lane. Um, you might hear an occasional order from the order box. Um, we did identify there's a trash enclosure proposed that's pretty close to, uh, the existing residential development around the site. So trash trucks, delivery trucks, things of that nature, um, could be the, the potential noise impacts. Um, those are relatively minor along a commercial corridor. Um, and to the trustee Gator's question, uh, town staff has not heard any comments from any of these surrounding property owners or the public. We haven't had any public comments, uh, outside of the Planning Commission hearing, and none of them have been directly related to the noise.
Perfect, thank you, and then the final question, and if the, um, applicants can, they could just address this when they speak to the board. Uh, but just one of the concerns I had was just with cars queuing and with traffic backing up. It seemed in the document like they have a plan for how to deal with overages. So if they could just address, how many cars do they expect to be in the queue? And then therefore, if there is an overage, how, what is their plan to address that? So just whenever they speak to the board, if they could address those, that would be great.
Have you got any questions for this? Nope. Trustee Jerome? I'm gonna wait for presentation and then, uh, a few questions, I'll ask them. Okay. Anything?
I'll wait.
I guess my concern, Cody, was on the, on the traffic study, I understand the restriping on Sixth. But now you've got basically a hundred and thirty feet of a left turn lane that this facility and the gas station across the street are fighting for, both in left turns, how are they gonna address that? That seems very short for traffic that's gonna be happening similar times of the day.
Yeah, so thank you, trustee, uh, Knutson. Um, that was one of the concerns that was originally brought up, uh, from town staff. And the original site proposal, um, there was a full access movement, uh, allowed for the site or proposed for the site directly on the Sixth Street, and, uh, staff identified that concern and suggested that we reevaluate to either eliminate the access or make it just a right exit only. And the applicants did reconfigure their site plan to make that an, an exit only, uh, for a southbound right turn. So the, the, the left turn conflicts would occur at the, uh, the alley entrance where O'Reilly's has already been approved for their access and the come and go, uh, access on the east side of Sixth Street. So those left turn conflicts exist today. Um, the center-left turn lane, uh, was identified as the, the best option to address the existing left turn conflicts. Um, and so that's, that's kind of, we've kind of acknowledged the fact that that already exists today and we didn't want to eliminate access for O'Reilly's. Um, so that was, it's definitely a consideration and one that, that we've kind of worked through and proposed the, what we feel is a, a reasonable solution to meet the town's standards for, minimum standards for traffic, uh, design. Um, I'm not the expert on the, on the traffic analysis. Uh, if the applicant's traffic engineers or if the town engineering would like to comment on that, I'd open that, uh, for them as well. Um, and we can circle back around to that if you desire.
I think we're gonna want to circle back around to that, that's been a couple of requests. Trustee Whitehouse, you got anything you want to ask?
Uh, not at this time, we went over this ground pretty thoroughly at the Planning Commission, so.
I don't have anything. You wanted to see the presentation, owner, hear from the owner. Yeah, want to hear from the owner. Mister Cassidy?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Hammond and Board of Trustees, Town Staff. Uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present to you tonight. Uh, it was interesting, uh, to, uh, listen to the, uh, progress you're making on your comprehensive plan. Uh, it's, uh, it's a great tool to have, uh, when you're complete, and I know you're all looking forward to that. I, I heard that through the, uh, the town members that, uh, spoke up. Um, I heard some, uh, really interesting thoughts that, uh, uh, that were made. I, I, I liked what I heard about, uh, the Wellington pride and the small-town charm and, uh, I think that when we, uh, brought the Meridian Trust, uh, project, uh, into Wellington and, and now this, uh, human bean project that, uh, we're doing, uh, our part to help the town thrive in their economy desires. Uh, this is, uh, obvious two, uh, examples of diversified businesses that were brought up in your comprehensive plan. Uh, I was especially, uh, uh, liking the comments about, uh, the hometown character. It's interesting for you all to know that, uh, the human bean, uh, ownership has, uh, five of their managers that are residents of the town of Wellington. Uh, so I, I think that's, uh, pretty significant that, uh, human bean coming to Wellington is, uh, is definitely, uh, desiring to be part of your community and, and to, and to be a, a factor that your, your comprehensive plan is, is going to, uh, be a significant part of what we want to bring in the character and, and, uh, project, uh, amenities. Uh, so we're excited about, uh, the fact that, uh, we've been able to work through, uh, most of these issues that, uh, are concerning to the site, the probably most specifically, uh, uh, transportation. Uh, another key factor in your comprehensive plan. Uh, we spent considerable amount of time, uh, with the town's consultant and our own traffic engineering consultants, uh, working out solutions to, uh, keeping the traffic flow, making sure that we don't have any backup traffic on, uh, Sixth Street. Uh, making sure that, uh, traffic as it exits and enters the site uh, has enough signage to know the traffic flow and keep out of the residential alley, keep, uh, traffic out of the adjacent, uh, auto parts store. Uh, we, uh, we know that, uh, uh, the traffic on the site, uh, will need to, uh, have abatements to lighting and noise and, uh, just, uh, a, a fact of the operation of this store. Uh, there are two drive-up windows and one walk-up window, all the ordering is done at the windows. Uh, so there won't be an outside speaker or, uh, noise coming from, uh, ordering and, and, uh, the breeze is, uh, talking to the cars until they get to the window itself. Uh, we, I think can answer all of these questions that, uh, the trustees have brought up prior to our, uh, presentation. Uh, I'm going to, after the thank yous for the staff and, and all the help that we got from the town, uh, turn this, uh, presentation over to our project architect, Kendra Shirley. Uh, Kendra is an architect on staff that has taken this project from beginning, uh, through the process and approval with a unanimous approval, I should, I might point out, uh, with the Planning Commission. And, uh, so she will give you a few of the facts on, uh, operation of the store and, uh, some of the traffic considerations that were mentioned in the questions. And then we'll open it up to, uh, any other questions that you might have, uh, as we, uh, uh, make this presentation tonight, so again, thank you. And, uh, Kendra, if you want to, uh, give them a brief description of what we're doing and, and, uh, answer some of these questions that came up, I'll turn the presentation over to you.
Everyone, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you for having us tonight, um, it's a pleasure to be here and, uh, participate in, uh, helping with the growth and, uh, betterment of the town of Wellington. Um, we are looking forward to the opportunity to be a part of this great community, and I know that the human bean, um, one of their big priorities as a company, um, is community, and, um, I think that fits in very well with, with what the town of Wellington is looking for. Uh, a few key points about this, this project that through the process and the review process and public comments and planning commission comments and, and town comments that we've received, um, the big factors have been noise and traffic um, and pedestrian lighting, and I want to just briefly touch on how we have, um, put in efforts to make sure that, that those concerns are mitigated. Uh, we have ample lighting on the site to allow for, um, safe pedestrian lighting along the sidewalk, uh, to the, the walk-up window as well as along Sixth Street. And we have also, in order to prevent lighting from spilling over into the residential areas to the west and the south of the site, we have proposed a three-and-a-half-foot-tall, um, fence, uh, privacy fence, as well as landscaping along those areas to prevent any headlights that are on-site, uh, from spilling over towards the residential areas of the community. And also in terms of traffic, um, I know it was, uh, one of the questions was, um, the peak hour traffic. Uh, for morning traffic, it is seventy-eight, uh, trip ends in the morning for the peak hour and twenty-two afternoon peak hour trip ends. Um, those are the, the data numbers for, for that. And, um, just to give you a little description about how the site works, um, to help keep traffic flowing on the site well, as well as allow for ample onsite queuing. Uh, there are two lanes that go all the way around the, the coffee stand. There are, is a drive-up lane on the south side as well as the north side. Um, and that allows for cars to queue up at each drive-up window. And if one drive-up line was to overload and start to get too long, um, it allows for those in the queue to go around the, the standing traffic and drive around to the opposite window. Um, so that allows for double the amount of queuing on-site as well as ample room for onsite traffic to go around and, um, access the drive-up window or decide to park and go to the walk-up window or to exit the site. Um, one thing to note, um, is that, you know, we did take into concern the comments about, um, preventing any sort of backup on Sixth Street with, with queuing, and that is how, uh, as Cody, uh, pointed out, we, uh, redrew the plan to propose a ride-out only onto Sixth Street to prevent any sort of, um, backing up onto Sixth Street for the queue lines for the coffee stand. Um, so the, the primary access to the site is, uh, through the alley, which gives ample room for, um, traffic accessing the site um, and preventing them from backing up into Sixth Street and impeding any sort of traffic. Um, another thing that was proposed was the double-yellow line striping in the alley to help organize the, the alley traffic, both existing and the new proposed traffic for the human bean. Um, to keep any exiting traffic from the alley, on the south side of the alley, to keep the, the entering traffic to the alley that is going to O'Reilly's or to the human bean, um, allow them ample room to access, um, the alley so that they don't end up, uh, getting stuck on Sixth Street trying to access the alley. So, uh, uh, we also plan to, as one of the comments were, were to, um, further the, the striping plan to show that how that connects along Sixth Street, um, both to the north and the south. Um, that double left turn lane, um, through, uh, numerous meetings and conversations with our traffic consultant as well as the town's traffic consultant and the town team, um, that was seen to be the best solution for the traffic along Sixth Street. Um, uh, we have also taken care of, um, onsite drainage with a detention area on-site and connecting that to the existing stu- storm sewer in the alley to the north. Um, and, uh, through this whole process, um, we have done our best to make sure that any comments and concerns that have been brought up by the town and the community have been heard and taken into consideration and done our best to make sure that the, the traffic, um, that the human bean will be bringing to the community will be, um, a positive outcome for the town and the community. Um, another thing to note about this traffic is that, uh, almost ninety percent of the traffic for the human bean is pass-by traffic, meaning it's traffic that is already in the area passing by. Um, so the amount of traffic that, that human bean will add to this, this area of Wellington um, should not have a, uh, negative impact to the traffic, um, based on our data and findings. And I'd be happy to take any sort of, uh, further comments, um, if I've missed anything or if there are any further comments, thank you.
It's not really a question, it's just more, well, actually I do have a question. Um, so the human bean location on North College, in comparison as far as the footprint and the size of the traffic lanes, uh, how does this compare to North Colleges? Is it larger footprint, smaller footprint driveway, uh, do you have any of that information?
Yes, so that was something that was, uh, previously brought up through this process and, um, something that we did review and research. Um, so this, um, traffic site plan, uh, that we have for this location does allow for more onsite que- queuing than, uh, both of the North Co-, uh, the Fort Collins locations. Um, as well as there is, uh, a much lower amount of traffic existing in this area compared to the Fort Collins locations. And as noted, with the primary access to this site being from the alley, um, there, it allows for um, any unforeseen amounts of traffic trying to access this, that site that if they were to back up, it would back up into the alley and not impede traffic on Sixth Street. Um, it would take more than twenty vehicles, about twenty vehicles, for trying to access the site in order to, on one side without queuing around to the other drive-up window before it could possibly reach Sixth Street. And based on, um, the engineering by our traffic consultant, um, that is not, uh, a scenario that is foreseen.
Okay, so, and then why, uh, what's the anticipation for folks using the alley to exit over into the residential neighborhood off of Fifth Street?
So, um, that-
Happening?
We have done our best to, to mitigate, um, any traffic, uh, exiting our site from using the undeveloped portion of the alley towards Fifth Street. So we have proposed a, um, local traffic-only sign, um, as Cody has, has brought up. A local traffic-only sign at the, uh, west end of the alley um, to deter traffic going in that direction unless it is local traffic, um, from those residences. And then the exit from the site to the alley is a right-only exit as well as a sign, uh, pointing to Sixth Street and a no-left turn sign. So all of that signage as well as, um, signage that will be, uh, directional signage on-site will point traffic towards Sixth Street for exiting. And, um, based on the, the traffic engineering queuing time, uh, it isn't expected that the traffic, um, exiting the alley will back up enough to encourage traffic to take the extra time to go that direction to try and get, um, to Cleveland.
And then, you kind of touched a little bit on it, but on Sixth Street there, the, the left turn lane that goes into, uh, the gas station, that also basically is the same left turn lane if you're heading north to turn left onto Cleveland or to even go straight across, um, Cleveland Avenue. And that you're most likely- And at your most likely peak time, that is a complete mess. It's backed up constantly. So what else could be done to mitigate that? Because now we have cars lined up to turn left on the Cleveland, they want to go straight across Sixth Street to hit the middle school or I Stone. And so they're lined up there and then mixed in down the way a little bit. Now you have cars that are wanting to turn left into human being, the light turns green and half the traffic moves, the other stays because they want to turn left to the human being, they can't because there's oncoming traffic. I mean, that's not a great solution as far as I can see. I think there's going to be huge traffic problems right there. I guess I would be more inclined to look at a right in, right out only. And I know that causes problems for people coming from the south, but I see a huge traffic problem right there in that intersection because there's a lot of going on, a short amount of distance between come and goes, drive, you know, driveway and the interstate. And there's maybe room for seven, eight cars to be lined up. And I've been stuck in that traffic and it's not very fun when you want to get your kids to school on time. So that's my biggest concern with that. I know that there is a content, there was a contingency plan about come and go, adding a separate drive and turning theirs into a right in, right out only. So I don't know if we need to maybe, that needs to be explored, but I'm not sure if it's fair to require come and go to do a whole bunch of upgrades to accommodate another business. So those are my comments at this point. Kendra, can you shed any light on that left turn lane or that proposed restriping?
Yeah, so so let me further explain how we we came to the decision to propose the the two way left turn lane. So currently, there is no, for the northbound traffic, there is nowhere for them to make the existing left turn lane into the alley. If they were held up by southbound traffic coming too fast and they had to wait trying to make that left turn into the alley existing, there's nowhere for them to wait without impeding the northbound traffic. So this two way turn lane will allow them a location to wait to turn left into the alley and stack up without impeding the northbound traffic, which allows them to wait for the the opening with any north, southbound traffic trying to go past. As far as as the proximity to come and goes access, based on the the traffic data, the amount of vehicles that would be looking to to take a left turn into come and go at the same time, any northbound traffic would be looking to take a left turn into the alley is extremely minimal. I believe it's one, one an hour at most. I'm not positive on that exact number. But it wouldn't be a significant number of vehicles consistently looking to to take a left into the alley and a left into come and go at the same time. What I can say in terms of your comments is that based on this traffic design, we do meet all of the current standards, town standards for traffic based on this design.
It's also significant that you understand that at the Sixth Street exit from our site, that is for the human being, a right out only and is not a entrance.
Anyone else got comments for Kendra or? Oh, okay. Let's turn it over to the public this time. Anyone here have anything they wish to bring up in person?
I'm just wondering what Ziggy's is thinking.
Well, if you're going to speak, ma'am, would you like to come up? Name and address if you wouldn't mind.
Andrew Jonas, seven four five one Starkweather, here in Wellington. I'm moved to the area, just came from Atlanta. So I'm just wondering what Ziggy's is thinking. They've got this nice new building and they've got plenty of parking and plenty of room to drive in and out. Did they think that human being was going to come in and try to take some of their business?
Probably not.
I would be upset if I was Ziggy's.
Yeah, but some of these places probably like to conglomerate, just like all those gas stations around there. They're just full, every one of them. That's true, you know, so they kind of like to be, because if they're too full, they'll go down to Ziggy's.
Well, maybe so.
All right, thank you though, okay.
Michael Clark, if you can unmute yourself, state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Michael Clark and I live over in Sage Meadows neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that I guess my biggest concern is that I love human bean coffee and I'm a little bit worried that I might spend a little bit too much money there. But other than that, I hope to see human bean in the town. I know we do have the Ziggy's and we do have our own little boutique coffee shop downtown Owl Canyon, which I also love and think is a great company, but competition, I think, breeds a better brew. So I hope everything goes well and if not, if not with this location, then maybe with a different one. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Nelson?
Thanks for letting me speak. The, there've been several comments in getting in and out of the coffee shops is is something that we all deal with anytime we go through a drive through, whether it's Taco John's or wherever. I think that looking at the solution for this is is good, you have to do that to make sure that nothing is interfered with because you get cars going too many directions in that heavy traffic area, it can be a problem. So I think they've done a good job of of thinking this out and try and do something that will work. They've pulled cars off of off of Sixth Street. You know, it's a pretty continuous activity and you've got relatively short periods of time that that's going to occur. You've got the traffic flow in the morning, people going to work. You know, you've got to look at this. We all have been involved with coffee shops, either being a an owner or being a consumer. And one thing, the more coffee we can get into people coming on the highway and going back on the highway, safer traffic going south more. I think that the the business itself is an excellent addition to town. The consumer in this area for drive through is usually on the work, on the way to work coming home. And they are doing that at peak times. And I think if the traffic layout and the traffic pattern through the come and go, through the human being, the way you can do double lanes going around, that's going to pick up that extra, extra vehicles coming in and make it safe for people coming and going. And going out of the stands, right turn in, right turn out. And I think that's, that's a good possibility, make that thing work and be useful. It's another bit of income from the town. Every small business in the town is helpful. I just hope we have enough water to supply the, like, make coffee. So I think that's a bigger issue that you guys have to look at, but that's for another time. Enjoy the coffee. I think it's a great addition and I'll be looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any longer, I could do business issues. Thank you very much.
We have Jess, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, my name is Jessie Andreen and I'm in the Harvest College neighborhood. I also have a few concerns with human being coming in, mainly traffic as well. I think just with the proposed growth that was discussed in the comprehensive plan, I think it's going to, if if our town really is going to grow as much as we think it is, I just, I see that becoming even more of a problem. I also was a little bit confused when Kendra was talking about, I believe she said ninety percent of traffic would be from local sources and I, I don't agree with that just because we're right off the interstate. I think being the first stop in Colorado and the last stop in Colorado, we're going to get a lot more traffic if people realize that there's a drive through coffee shop right on that main corner. So I think the the predicted traffic is going to be much higher, or the predicted traffic is is currently lower than what it will be. I also am concerned, I live south of of that area, and so I'm concerned with the right in, right out lanes. I think a lot of traffic is going to end up in either neighborhoods or in like the hotel area right there. I just see it, again, I'm, I'm thinking quite a few cars at once and I know it's not always going to be busy, but I do think a lot of traffic's going to end up just kind of all over the place. I also think that at this point, our town is too small for two drive through coffee shops. And if we were to have another one, I would think we would want one more on the west side of town, closer to Highway One. I'm also concerned about safety in that area with the alleyway. I know that you guys talked about trying to have traffic go right outside of the human being, but I'm sure there's still going to be quite a bit of traffic going left through the alleyway. So I just think, you know, with kids and families in that area, it could get a little bit dangerous. And then I also wondered, I have heard several people say that they didn't want another coffee shop in our town, and so I just wonder if that's being taken into consideration as well. I know that there's also an emphasis on mom and pop shops and Ziggy's is Colorado owned. And I know the owners of human being are also local, but it is a franchise. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Kathy Wydellis, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Kathy Wydellis, three four zero five Revere Court. And I must admit, I was looking at this, at the map on, in the packet, and it looked like people would be driving in from behind, off of Cleveland, behind O'Reilly's to go to the coffee shop. And now it looks like I'm totally all wet that way. Looks like people can get, you get in between O'Reilly's and the coffee shop in an alleyway and then go around it and then you either go back out the way you came or you turn right and go on Sixth Street to head south. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you want to get back on the interstate, you know, say like, like the last speaker just said, Jess, if you want to go back on the interstate, you'll come out one of the exits and do you, can you turn left from the one that's that you came in?
The alleyway, you can turn left.
You can turn left, so you're closer to the the stoplight, but there's still all that distance of O'Reilly's between there. And there'll be a double, double lane to to turn left. Okay.
That's right.
All right, I, I just was having trouble picturing it and, and I agree, I think we'll have an increase of of traffic because of the interstate and I'm sure they'll be advertising along the interstate and people will be dying for coffee soup. But I, I, I'm not sure that it will be that big of a problem. Of course, when I can't get out of come and go sometime, I probably will be cussing it, but, but it looks like you've made the best of the situation. You have to get in and get out, so thanks for answering my question.
Thank you.
Next. Erin Jerome, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
At thirty seven twelve Wine Cup Street. So I don't know if you guys have kind of looked at the statistics. If you get on Google, you can look, there are three human being locations in Fort Collins. Their peak hours of the day are between eight and ten AM and then also with a second wave at three and four PM. Those are like the peak waves for the middle school and I Stone Elementary. There are five hundred and fifty two middle schoolers at this point and six hundred and twenty six students at the elementary. That is a significant amount of traffic at both of those peak times that I have personally experienced. I have a kid at the middle school and I have seen the traffic backed up from people trying to get across the intersection at those hours of the day. And also they keep referencing using the alleyway, but that's only going to put more traffic right back on the Cleveland because they're going to enter or exit out of Fifth Street and then they're just going to turn right on the Cleveland and put them right back at the intersection. So really, that intersection doesn't do anything in my opinion, but just kind of put them into a different direction of backing up Cleveland once again at that intersection. Also, I guess I'd like to say that, you know, Wellington has kind of spoken and their biggest concern was preserving the downtown and that small town feel. That boundary of where that human being location wants to go falls right within the Main Street boundaries, you know, and I feel like the town has a pretty good relationship with that program and kind of the same ones and desires of wanting to preserve life into those downtown businesses. And not a lot of people have mentioned that Owl Canyon is a reef block from that location and they do a lot for this community, serve on boards, they donate to the schools and I'm pretty sure, you know, they donate to town events as well. And then I think it would be a pretty low blow for you guys to allow this business so close to them while also obstructing that intersection. They gave a really great presentation, but at the end of the day, you know, some of those people don't live here, you guys live here, you see the traffic at that intersection and you know what it's going to do to this community. So with that being said, I guess that's my opinion.
Thank you, Erin. Anyone else?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Little comments, start over there, trustee Gator.
I personally don't have additional questions. I would share in some of the concerns that were made by members of the community. Again, part of this ties back into the comprehensive plan, I can understand, although I don't know, I'm hearing from some citizens, it's a problem already, but I can understand it might not be an issue now, but if we're talking about doubling our size here in the next ten years, fifteen years, this could be creating a pretty massive problem that I don't know if there's a way for us to mitigate that ten years down the road. I understand it might not be a big issue now, but my concern is that's probably what they said about the Starbucks on College right across from, right in that Drake area and that's, or sorry, yeah, right there, and that's pretty much a nightmare. So I just, that's it, it is a concern and I don't know, I don't go through that intersection, but I am hearing from several members of the community and I don't, I guess the question is, is will the changes proposed really address that? I'm not sure.
Justice McDonald? Anything? Press the drum.
Yeah, I, I just have.
Yeah, I I I just have huge traffic concerns. Obviously, we need, you know, to bring more commercial businesses to this town and. I just, I'm not convinced that any of the. Studies are true reflections of what's really gonna happen at this intersection in real time, live. Even if there's a couple of times a week where there's traffic problems, that's a couple of times too many. I don't believe that commercial businesses should be leaning on on public right aways as a spill off for their businesses. Uh, one of the biggest pet peeves I have when I go down to Fort Collins is when I'm heading north on College is if I'm not paying attention, I get too close to that Canes. Before I realize where I'm at and I get stuck. Irritates me to no end. And the same thing has happened to me, um, going south on College at that human being. It doesn't happen all the time, but you know. It happens enough that it, I think it's an issue and I think it should be addressed prior to. It becoming an issue, you know, if we have the the foresight to figure out that it's probably going to be an issue, then you know, there should be some other ways around. Um, working around those issues. I don't know exactly what those are because, you know, that's not my specialty. And I really believe that we're gonna see um, that alleyway utilized going to the west, spilling traffic off onto Fifth. And I just drove down that street today because I was kind of curious of what it would look like if there was an influx of traffic and. It seems like Fifth is not quite as wide of a street as some of the other streets in Wellington and there was cars parked on both sides up and down the street. I can see it causing, causing a lot of of troubles over there too. So I'm just not convinced that. This is the right place for this type of business based on its location, its proximity to the intersection of Cleveland and Sixth. And just the pure amount of traffic that's there on a daily basis that I personally witness pretty much every single day. Cause I I run that intersection every single day. So.
Trustee Kenny?
A lot of the issues brought up today are the concerns are not um, different from what we discussed in the planning commission. Um, my major concerns were lighting, light pollution and traffic. Those are the three things that we chose to require new site plans for before hearing it before the planning commission and that's why it was tabled, just as a reminder. Um, the response by the applicants was overwhelmingly productive. Uh, they provided new site plans that acknowledged pedestrian lighting. They put in additional fences and landscaping to acknowledge light pollution. And um, they did completely change the traffic pattern and provided substantial traffic engineering. Um, stating and uh, that the traffic condition would be okay with the additional area in the alley. That was not previously the plan and that's why they said with their traffic review, that was the recommendation. But we wanted to see it on on paper in the site plans before we consider it. From my perspective, all of my concerns were acknowledged. I have a lot of love for Owl Canyon. You'll see me there almost every day of the week. Uh, it's one of my favorites. I also know that I welcome businesses to Wellington. And it is not my job to say who or what can come if they're willing to put in the effort and go through the process of bringing the right site plan to us. So I will be voting yes for this conditional use. Um, and I think that they have acknowledged the issues that we had before and have brought in this meeting today.
Uh, one last question is more directed for Cody, but as this area develops out. Did I not hear at one point when the traffic hits a certain count that the businesses basically from Roosevelt to. Cleveland would be right in, right out through that to eliminate all the left turn?
So I I heard that question, uh, trustee Knutson, and I'd be happy to acknowledge that now. Or um, I don't want to lose the opportunity for our public hearing process to give the applicant the chance to respond as well. Um, I have a question from trustee Gator from earlier I wanted to respond to and I can respond to trustee Knutson's as well.
Okay.
But that's what you have, right? Okay. Trustee Whitehouse, you got anything?
Well, I'd like to reiterate comments of trustee Kenny. We did go over this ground pretty thoroughly and uh, I believe the applicant has. You know, worked diligently with the town to resolve the issues raised and also I believe uh. Mr. Gowing, Public Works Director also suggested that based on all the standards that exist and with the professional services that. I'm not exactly sure which organization, but provides this data that based on current standards and the best available data. The uh, traffic issues are going to be dealt with on the site and they don't foresee any, any backup onto uh, Sixth Street. That's one comment. Um, so I I I have not heard anything today that would change my, I was supportive of this application in the planning commission. And I see nothing, I've heard nothing here today that would suggest I would change my vote. I would like to make a comment that maybe some residents are unaware of this, but the Board of Trustees nor the Planning and Zoning Commission gets to actually choose. Who is willing to invest in our community. And we don't get to pick the winners and losers. If someone comes and meets our codes and has the appropriate spot, then basically we, we have to say yes. So there's a distinction that we don't actually have a lot of uh, we review this stuff, but we don't get to pick the winners and losers. That's sort of a general comment. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, final comment from me. Uh, I I I go there every day too, see you all the time. I'm well aware of the traffic and. Us three and the the entire planning commission sent this package back the first time we saw it. We had the same concerns. We see the traffic, we know the schools, know the times, we had to be convinced. They went, they did their work, they did their traffic studies, they used numbers, they used uh, logic, they used, and they made some upgrades, they made some changes. They give us some reassurances that because of the double turn lane, double lanes around this uh, facility, you're gonna absorb most of the cars there. And you're not, you know, you're not gonna have fifty cars at one time here trying to get coffee. There's a lot of, there's a lot of room in here. To circulate this little building with two lanes and then exit and get out. And then so they can reassure us that, you know, this. They're gonna make it and it counts. That's all we, it's scientific, they're engineers. So we have, that's what we had to go off of. Vote a yes. We send it up here unanimously. No, I gotta go. Yes. Okay. Nothing else. Cody, you want to answer those questions?
Uh, I can, Mayor. I I would suggest that our our public hearing procedures would allow the applicant opportunity to make any, any closing remarks as well. I've given them before.
Yeah, reassure us about this traffic.
Okay, well, first of all, uh, thank you very much. We, we appreciate hearing uh. Uh, the concerns and and the comments from the neighborhood and the neighbors, the the community. Uh, it makes the process work and um, we just want to assure you that uh. We're bringing this project to the town of Wellington, solving the traffic issues that uh. Were evident in the work with Cody and his staff in your traffic engineer. Uh, we brought uh, our expert to the table, certified traffic engineer. Uh, there has been a lot of discussion on how traffic with the numbers predicted. Will work and work efficiently and we feel very confident that we have addressed and solved all of uh. Uh, the issues with traffic that uh, we put together every what if scenario that we could think of. Uh, it should be noted that when the comment was made that it's local traffic only. The reference was local to the traffic on Cleveland and Sixth Street and that intersection. Uh, we did not intend that that comment be made to uh, the local community of Wellington. But we know that there's traffic coming off of by twenty five, come and go. Uh, we know that there is uh, could be additional traffic when knowing there is a coffee shop available. Uh, matter of fact, the two, three coffee shops and they're all uh, very capable of handling different types of coffee customers. Uh, so the human being is gonna be an exciting uh, opportunity for the local owners uh, in Colorado. To open this store and and serve your community well with the product that they uh, manufacture and they're excited to come to Wellington. The comments that uh, were made tonight were taken to heart. Believe me. It's been good for us as consultants to be able to work with this owner. Who took all of these comments to heart, took all of these issues with uh, traffic, with lighting, with uh, neighborhood. Uh, residents, we personally talked with the auto parts uh, people and. And they're excited to have us for neighbors. Uh, so we, we bring a lot to the table tonight. We solved uh, every issue that we could uh, manufacture and uh, planning commission could uh, bring as well as the staff. Uh, yes, we have a few uh, conditions for the approval, none of which uh, we are. Worried about not being able to provide uh, on an administrative approval by the staff. Uh, so we feel very confident that we're there and that we have brought a great uh, and successful uh, opportunity to Wellington. Thank you again for this opportunity. We look forward to working in your community. And if there's any other questions or issues that we've left out, we're more than willing. Able to answer those for you. Uh, but thank you again for our opportunity tonight and for your hearing our project.
Thank you, sir. Cody?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you to everyone for the public comments, uh, the discussion from the board and the response from uh, Mr. Cassidy. Um, there were just a couple of things that I wanted to kind of follow up on, answer a couple of questions and and close some comments. Um, I I do agree, there there was a, one of the public comments had questioned the local traffic. Um, and just wanted to to point out that the, in the traffic impact study that was evaluated by uh, the traffic engineers. Um, the the background traffic includes the trips coming from the highway. So the background is all of the vehicles that are already driving on Cleveland and Sixth Street, which which Mr. Cassidy alluded to. Um, so that does, the the comment that came up earlier was um, ninety percent of the uh. Of the trips are already existing. That does include the trips coming from the highway. Wanted to uh, follow up, trustee Gator had asked about what is the existing uh, traffic on those, those streets? And that ties in greatly with the the background traffic. So the short range uh, background traffic, which is twenty twenty five uh, through the year twenty twenty five. Um, there's an expected three hundred and ninety eight northbound trips on Sixth Street and three hundred and eighty six uh, southbound. Um, that would be the peak hour trips on that corridor. Um, and Cleveland is a little bit lower than that for the short range. The long range, which is in projected, uh, these are, you know, best guess, projected for the long range uh, for Sixth Street is five hundred and sixty five uh, PM. Would be the highest uh, trip rate. Um, so the peak hour in the afternoon is expected to be somewhere on the five hundred and sixty five vehicle mark. And then southbound on Sixth Street in the afternoon peak is six hundred and eighty five. And it's higher in the afternoon because you see more people coming home off the highway. Um, so those are your existing and projected uh, traffic counts on Sixth Street to answer the the previous question. Then trustee Knutson asked a question about the uh, entrances along Sixth Street. Um, the existing entrances and the need to be converted to a ride in, ride out uh, in the future. Uh, your recollection is correct, trustee Knutson, uh, for the Come and Go uh, site. Uh, there's a development agreement with the town, between the town and Come and Go. Um, with a couple of thresholds identified for uh, conditions that would require that that driveway entrance be converted to a right in, right out uh, only uh, entrance. Um, we evaluated that as part of this analysis and those thresholds are not being tripped at this time. Uh, and the proposed development for uh, human being across the street. Um, that trip generation does not trigger any of the thresholds for uh, come and go to make that change. The um, for reference, one of those thresholds uh, is the ninety fifth percentile of traffic volume. Um, and we're, we're not even close to reaching that limit currently um, with the proposed addition of human being uh, drive through coffee shop. Uh, one of the other factors that's evaluated in that um, consideration uh, is the level of service. Uh, level of service, when we talk about it from a traffic standpoint, refers to uh, the functional operation of intersections and turn movements to allow the free flow of traffic. Uh, that's graded uh, just like your, your students' report cards, level of service A, level of service B, C, D, and F. Um, the threshold for the Come and Go uh, access to be changed or right in, right out would have to be at a level of service F. For that entrance or for the traffic queues at the Cleveland and Sixth Street intersection. Um, those are currently at level of service B or C depending on the time of day. Um, so it's not uh, encroaching on that threshold for a change to be required. Um, generally speaking as well, uh, on the level of service uh, for the trip uh, or the traffic impact study for the proposed human being coffee shop. Uh, all of the turning movements are operating at level of C, uh, level of service C or higher. Um, that is to to say uh, that on average, um, we expect some, some queues, we expect some delays. Uh, we expect that there will be some turning conflicts from time to time. Uh, level of, level of service C is generally acceptable uh, as a, as a acceptable measure for traffic. So that that's within the tolerances of the town's criteria. Um, so when we said earlier that the uh, the proposed site and its conditions met the town's minimum standards. Um, it includes the level of service for operational functionality at those intersections and turns. Uh, we we also pointed out at the planning commission meeting, uh, we don't, uh, none of us as a, as a staff, no one at human bean or the board or the town. Uh, is claiming that there's never gonna be a conflict or a problem. Um, those things do come up from time to time. Uh, drivers who are not familiar with it, with a new site are always gonna have a learning curve. Uh, so no one's claiming that there will never be a problem. What we're saying is that the, from a design standpoint. The, the minimum level of service has been met and the design configurations that have been updated on this proposed site plan. Uh, reflect a reasonable level to uh, promote the free flow of traffic and and promote safe traffic movements. Uh, so that's really what we're saying, not that there will never ever be a problem. So those are, those are the closing remarks and I'm happy to stand for any other questions if I'm, if I might have missed a comment earlier, I apologize and I'm happy to respond to that.
There's no further comments? I'd like to entertain a motion. Oh, you got.
I just, I have one, I have one question. Mr. Nelson brought up an interesting point and I'm sorry, you guys gave me too much time to think sitting here. How, what is the average water usage for a coffee shop? Do you know what the average gallon usage is for one of your?
Uh, that would be a question we would have to get an answer back to you. I am not uh, sure what that gallon usage is, but I do know that uh, water taps are within the normal range for uh, a commercial coffee shop.
Thank you.
Got something?
Uh, I move to approve the site plans for eighty one twenty.
Uh, I move to approve the site plans for eighty-one, twenty-one Sixth Street forward. I recommend, oh, shoot, I'm reading the wrong thing. I'm sorry.
You want to start over?
I got lost down here. I move that we approve the conditional use for human be, being drive-through in the C-one zoning district at eighty-one, twenty-one Sixth Street with the conditions provided by staff.
I'll second that.
Let's get a real call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
No.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
No.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Knutson?
No.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. We look forward to seeing it.
All right. Thank you all.
For a two-minute stretch?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any, uh, can I move to home?
I gotta go, we gotta go. We got four.
I don't have an issue with that. All right. Might need more than two minutes, but I will drive fast. See you soon.
I'll see you soon.
Back to it. Next item, two, number two. Ordinance number zero-one, dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an emergency ordinance in municipal code to allow water dedication to be treated as pertinent to lots.
Mayor and trustees, this is, you'll find this at page one eighty-six to one eighty-eight at your packet. Uh, this was previously discussed at the February twenty-third meeting. Uh, there were concerns which led to its being tabled um voiced by uh trustees Kenny and uh McDonald. I've talked to both of them um offline. I believe trustee McDonald, putting words in her mouth, probably may but still have concerns which she can bring up. Uh, this is an emergency ordinance. Uh, it would take six votes in order to pass it, a three-fourth vote. I would suggest that if you do not get uh six votes, let it be considered as a non-emergency ordinance, which would take a majority to pass. The couple of things that were of concern came up in my discussions with trustee McDonald and trustee Kenny. And I probably ought to elaborate on, because I may not have been clear enough in the February twenty-third meeting. The idea behind this ordinance is to allow developers who purchase water to um dedicate that water to specific lots. The rationale behind that is the town has encouraged contributions of water and that water, particularly North Pooter Water, that water has become extremely expensive. Um, it's currently in the neighborhood two hundred thousand dollars a share. A share will satisfy multiple lots, five to seven um with one share. And what developers, we've seen developers doing, uh, including the developer that spurred this request, um, is buying multiple shares when they become available. Those shares are then contributed to the town. They are put in the town's name for the developer to use and they then allocate those shares as they build lots to get taps. Um, the problem is, is it's, it's being voiced, is that the shares that are being contributed uh are extremely expensive and they can't utilize to security as long as they're in town, the town's name. The purpose of this ordinance would be to make those shares pertinent to just to satisfy the water requirements. And a pertinence is something that attaches to land. So what the town board would be doing by passing this ordinance would be, they would be establishing water attached to a certain lot. That water then could not be moved from that lot without the consent of the lender or without the consent and without the consent of the town board. Uh, that would then allow the water to be used to security for developer, for lenders, and we've spoken to the lender regarding that. There's been some concern that this is uh specific to one lender or one lender and one developer. There's some, that's, that is true, that it has come up at the request of a lender or developer. I've talked to Mr. Bird at some length. The thought is, is that with the amount of, well, ours developers particularly, with the amount of development that's going to hit because of the water, I think it's going to be used more often just because of the necessity of being able to collateralize the stock and have it contribute. That said, um, uh, the purpose of the ordinance would be to attach the water to specific lots. Um, as I indicated, the board would, the lot water would then only be moved um when the board approved it. Water would be held in the name of the town during that timeframe. Uh, if there's questions, I'm certainly happy to ask, answer them. I would note that when the ordinance was redone, it still has a February date on it. And that obviously would be something we would change it. It's dated as February ninth and that would be changed a month later. We'll just do that within the clerk's office. If there's any questions again, I'll be happy to respond.
I, I do have one question. So if we allow these water shares to be collateralized by a bank and just I guess as a offhand scenario, say one share covered five lots.
Yes.
Say the developer was able to successfully build on two of the lots, three lots they were not able to get built on. They have to uh, the bank decides to repossess those three lots. It's with the water attached to three of the lots, but the other two homes are built and are owned by some other people. But what does that do for the ability to exercise the rights for that water share?
That's a good question, um, and, and probably warrants clarification on my part. What is happening, the, the collateral is not, that there's not a lien that's being taken by the bank against the water shares. The water shares are owned by the town and there's no ability to reclaim the water shares. What happens is the water associated or attributable to that share is attached to a lot to satisfy the tap requirements, the water, raw water requirements for that lot. If the wa, if the uh lot isn't foreclosed upon, what the, what the foreclosing party would receive is a lot with the water requirement. I won't say fully satisfied, but at least partially satisfied. Um, that water would stay with that lot um and would transfer to the person foreclosing upon it. It would not be something that the, that the uh bank would be able to get the stock back. The stock is owned by the town.
Okay. Okay. That clarifies exactly what my question was.
And, and further, I should point out relative to that, um, in the event that our water requirements went up, let's say that you can satisfy five homes with one share of stock. It now takes, um, it'll only satisfy four homes because we change our requirements. This applies as of the time that they pull the building permit. So if there's a shortfall because we've changed our ordinance, they have to make up the difference.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for the question.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Trustee Gator?
So I know that, and I, I, this is more of a question in general, because I know we have different committees and things on the board and I believe we have a water policy committee. Is this something that our water policy committee was involved in the process of exploring this before this came to the board?
They were not. Traditionally, as I understood the role of the water policy committee, the water policy committee um addresses issues such as um, and usually those are water issues related to water supply, for example, dealing with North Pooter. Um, that has not traditionally been something that's gone to the water policy committee. The, it, for example, we did not, when we changed the water requirements, uh, most recently, that did not go to the water policy committee. That was more, do we purchase North Pooter Water? Those are the kind of things that have traditionally been presented to the water policy committee, uh, water, water supply.
So that's a, I, I guess, again, this is new to me working within the committees, but if we have a committee, this is a policy that's around water. I think that that committee should be involved in this process more, um, but.
As being on that committee, this is something I think that needs to be directly dealt with by the board. Um, that water committee is pretty much, my understanding of it and the way we've operated in the past is pretty much exactly how the town attorneys described it. It's more of the, we look at the supply side, developability and the different sources that we can look at. Um, once, you know, it's become a part of the water uh source and it's something that we're using. I think that, you know, these type of policies should be this board's discretion, not necessarily that board. But that's my personal opinion of being on that board.
Anything? No? Yes?
One of the concerns that was raised was relative to whether or not this is becoming a trending um issue or um something that is becoming more prevalent. Staff um reached out and said that they may have some resources that they'd like to reach out to and ask relative to that. They haven't had a response to that information yet, to the best of my knowledge. Ms. Garcia, would you like to provide some insight on that?
Thank you. Trustee McDonald. So I have reached out to a couple of local municipalities to check on um, if they've done something similar, how it's worked out for them, pros, cons, things like that. I have not heard back from them. Um, generally takes a couple of days, especially, I sent it out, I think it was Monday morning and a lot of them have board meetings either Monday night or Tuesday night. So um, most of those managers have been pretty busy over the last couple of days. So hoping to get some information back later this week. Um, but again, I didn't get any responses back as of right now. So I just checked my email again.
Yes, I have a couple of concerns. First, I don't think that this is necessarily an emergency. I think this is an attempt to accommodate a request from one developer and one lender, which causes me to pause and raise my eyebrows a little bit because we are working for the people in the community. Secondly, my understanding of what the purpose of the water policy committee was is different than trustee Jerome. And so I'll work with staff and the other policy committee members so that I understand clearly what our purpose is. I think that with some of the contentious issues that we've had surrounding water and some of these difficult conversations, had this policy been maybe vetted through the policy committee on the front end, we could have had a lot of these questions answered in the beginning instead of having to hash this out through two separate meetings. It's very convoluted and very difficult to understand. I actually understood our last meeting better, reading Crystal's minutes than I did Mr. March's presentation. So if I'm having a very difficult time understanding this concept, I'm sure that our community members are as well. So as we're talking about limiting growth and challenges with water, when we're presented with emergency ordinances um, to accommodate lenders and developers, I'm a little concerned.
Okay.
So if these are attached to lots and if something would happen to where the builder doesn't build on that lot, are those transferable to a different lot?
There is a mechanism to transfer it. What the ordinance provides is that it can be transferred, but only with the concurrence of both the board. So they have to come back to the board to get them released and with, and the board has, or the, the, they also have to present, prove that the lender has consented to that.
So there has to be consent from both the town and the lender.
The lender, yes.
So what happens if the lender doesn't consent?
Then it stays on the lot. And that's what the developer has to happen.
Uh, trustee Whitehouse, anything you want to ask?
I have a, sort of a question about the water board. Um, I'm actually very unclear what the role is of this, if they've got a charter or whether, again, whether this type of ordinance or would go through them. Again, it's not really clear what that board does or what their purview is, which is a sort of a bigger question than this particular ordinance right now. Yeah, I guess I'm not really concerned about it because of the price of the water and, you know, the burden it does if you're giving a million dollars of water to the town and you can't use that valuable asset to uh take out a loan. I'm not sure that I have a lot of concern regarding that particular issue. So those are my thoughts.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes, so um, I do think that this is a trend. I think that this will be an issue that other lenders and other builders and developers will be facing. Um, and the reason why is, I think, is because we put them in a difficult situation. So our goal from our board, and we made this very clear, is that we want water shares. We don't want cash and loo. And to encourage that, we increase cash and loo significantly or requiring water shares. So with that said, um, that's put then our builders and developers in difficult situations in which for their, for, with their lenders. I think that we must resolve this issue if our goal is to receive water shares. And I think that's the top thing that we need to be discussing and talking about, is how to make it easy, convenient, and possible for developers to bring us water shares, which is the ultimate goal. Um, and for that reason and understanding that we put this difficult situation in play and that we have an opportunity to resolve it, I think I will absolutely vote yes, and I want everybody else to consider that too. Um, just to keep us in line with our goal and what we really, really ultimately want to do, and that's get water shares.
We receive the same amount of shares regardless. It's just how they're being dedicated to the lot so that the developer can add the value so that they can get the loan to build the development. So they're still going to bring the same number of shares. It's just how the town is taking ownership so the developer can use the shares as collateral. So the developer is still bringing the same amount of shares.
If they can't, if they can't get a lender, then how, how will they continue to or want to bring us their shares?
With all due respect, trustee Kenny, if a developer can't get lending, that's not our problem. If a developer can't come up with the financing or the backing to develop their project, that, that's a concern. We don't want developers starting projects and then running out of money in the middle of them and then leaving half-finished pools or half-finished parks.
Okay, like, he was sat that way for years and current, you know, Red Lees Development. I mean, how long is, how many years has it sat undeveloped until just now? So I agree with you on, it's not necessarily the town board's um concern on how developments are financed. And I would agree with you that if, if a developer is having a hard time securing financing, then, you know, what's going to, must the horizon look like? What happens if there's a hiccup in the economy and, you know? So I, I understand that too. I also agree with you with the fact that I'm not really interested in setting an ordinance for one developer and one lender. Um, maybe if there was multiple developers and lenders that came to us wanting us to do this, that would be a different story. And I understand we're the ones that set the policy, but um water shares are water shares. North Pooter water shares cost the same, whether they're going to dedicate them to the town of Wellington or the town of Timneth or wherever else they're going to dedicate them to, they're going to have to pay the same price, no matter where they do it. And they're going to run into the same thing. I mean, if this, you know, if this developer and this bank want to do business in any other town, apparently they're going to have to go to every town that they do business with or do developments in and ask for the same ordinance. And it sounds like we're the testing grounds in my mind.
And I, I have another question and I don't, you may or may not be able to answer this, Mr. March. Do developers have the ability to finance more than one project per financing package? So could they finance multiple products across multiple municipalities? Or is the financing conditional to a specific area?
It obviously, let, let me respond to both of your questions. I could, but let me get that one first. It obviously, let me respond to both of your questions, I could, but let me get that one first. Obviously, that oftentimes depends on the developer. Some developers have the capability to find to get just large blanket loans and secure multiple properties. That is not the norm. Traditionally, developers will develop in phases. They'll get leans against those phases as lots are developed. Sometimes they're subdivided as as in bulk. Sometimes they're again done in phases. Banks will look at improvements that are being put in. That that's going to depend on a number of things as far as how the developer finances. On the other issue relative to, you're right, developers can fail. It seems to me that as we analyze this, that the sooner the town can get its water requirements satisfied, the better off the town is. It seems to me that their availability of North Pooter stock is diminishing. And what this does is it encourages developers to get the water into the town. If that project then fails, using Mountain View as an example, if that project fails and sits and the water's been satisfied, the town has that water in its water bank and can can and can use it. That's beneficial. The water is is pardon, unevaporating. It's good, we don't, there aren't that many shares of North Pooter left. There's 40,000 shares of North Pooter and they're getting bought by multiple municipalities. The sooner we can get that water in, seems to me the the better off the town is. If those, if that water is turned in and it isn't used by the subdivision, the town has the benefit, has the use for it. It's got to reserve it for future users, but we've got it in our water bank and that's what this encourages. That seems to be worthwhile.
Well, you got to get it from the bank.
No, the bank never gets it, Mr. Mayor. The 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 bank gets a loan against a lot with the water requirement satisfied or close to satisfied. We own the stock.
Okay, but that development goes bad over there. You can't use it over here and that development is going good.
Oh, sir, it's attributable to those, it's attached to those lots.
Those lots?
Yes, and it can't be moved off the bankrupt lots.
Can't be.
No, and and if someone takes that back, as they did, the example was Mountain View. If they take it back, they take it back with the with the water probably satisfied, but perhaps like partially satisfied. Because if we change our water requirements, they have to meet the gap.
So that doesn't make sense. So then how does that benefit the town?
Because the town has the water in its hands.
But we can't use it if it's dedicated to the lots and the lots are foreclosed on and they're not developed, we can't use that water. Whereas if the shares are dedicated to the town on the front end through the development, then we own the stock.
We own the stock, that's the point. That the whole idea is is this water right now is being turned into the town and the town puts it in its water bank. We say there are reserved lots that are specified that will not have to pay the water fee. It's already paid, but we have the water.
So you're dedicating the water to just those lots and not the rest of the community?
That's how it works currently. I mean, when a developer develops X amount of houses, they have to bring enough water shares that will cover the usage by those homes. I mean, I understand.
Right, then it's put into the bank.
Coming out, but but the bottom line is, is from my understanding of what we're talking about is the water gets dedicated to the town. And then internally, we assign each portion to one lot. And now that lot is satisfied for its water share that's required for, you know, for the development agreement. And from my understanding is if the bank repossesses that lot, the water is remains dedicated to that. So they have a lot that is with water, basically the tap he's paid, you know? That's not really what's happening, but you know, to to make it, in my mind, that's how I'm understanding it because it makes more sense to me that water taps paid. So when they go to liquidate it, it's more attractive to somebody to buy that because the water has been satisfied. We're still get to use the water because it belongs to, the stock has been belonged to, is now belongs to us. It's kind of, I know, you know, it's convoluted in my mind too, but I'm just trying to rationalize it. I I I still am with you, Trustee McDonald, that I I still have a real hard time with one lender and one developer asking for this, for us to do an ordinance. So that's pretty much how I'm leaning right now. You know, maybe if 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 it was all the developers or all the banks had come to the town and said, you know, this is starting to, we need to figure out how to keep this collateral, you know, so we can keep the money flowing. And that's one thing that, you know, once again, one bank, one lender or one lender and one developer, it feels like preferential treatment. And, you know, I don't know if should I identify this bank and this developers for the public record so we know who we're talking about? I don't know if that's prudent, but you know, I'm kind of wondering who we're bending over backwards for.
Well, and I'm kind of fuzzy about this lender situation too, because it's come from a couple of different angles. I've heard that we have been contacted by the bank and then I've heard that we reached out to this bank and they said they would do it. So would you please clarify?
Certainly. My understanding, and and we may need to get Mr. Bird on because he was dealing more specifically with the lender and developer or with the developer. I talked to the lender's attorney. It's my understanding that the lender was or the developer was Hartford and the lender was Points West Bank. It was, I I did speak, I was contacted by the attorney for Points West Bank. And they said, you know, they wanted to find, see if we could come up with a mechanism by which they could get security in the water. And this was what we came up with. We looked at other other scenarios of what other towns had done, looked at the flaws we saw in those. And this seemed to work better than, for example, issuing water certificates. And that's how we came to this this point. So I guess the only, my only, I've already voiced my concerns, obviously, but I guess we, I can look at it to one of two ways. This is preferential treatment to one, one lender and one developer. But if this is going to become a trend, then we could be one of the first communities to be in front of this trend. But I I don't know that this is going to be a trend. I haven't, you know, heard anything to the contrary, you know, to to make me believe that this is the way that banks are, the lenders are going to be trending. Points West Bank having a local branch here kind of makes me, you know, it changes a little bit because it's, it's, you know, kind of, it is preferential, but it's preferential to a hometown bank that's doing business here and that's helping the community, you know, develop. So I don't know, I I'll have to think about it a little bit longer, but I'm kind of on the fence.
I'll be honest, I would be more comfortable with making a decision after Ms. Garcia finishes her research. It, I feel that it's never a good thing to continue to table something, but I think that you have a valid point.
Would it be worthwhile from the board's perspective if we checked with other developers to see if this is something they might avail themselves with or would that?
Ms. Garcia, what is your flexibility and availability to do that kind of research and reach out to some local developers?
I would, I'd more than likely rely on Cody Bird to help out with that effort. He has that relationship with them. I can do, I can do the work on my end with other managers and other municipalities and would probably rely on Mr. Bird to check with our developers to see if that was something they'd be interested in.
I'd like to do some more work on this thing. Look at all this language in here that's brought in here on an emergency basis, you know what I mean? I still thought we should have had a work session.
I'd be happy to do that.
You know, I mean, learn a little bit more here. That's what I'm saying. I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to shove this thing through the vote.
I'm not trying to shove.
I know, I know, but it's an emergency.
If you don't wish to do it as an emergency, I tried to preface this by saying.
I know, but I'd rather, I'd like to work with the you and the people and get things done, but this is a.
We were trying to accommodate a developer.
And right, and a bank, a local bank too.
It seems to benefit the town and the developer.
It probably does, but you know, it'd be nice to know a few of the things. And I think that when, I don't think that's too out of line or request. And these guys are, these guys are investors in our town. There's a lot to that, you know, and I, there's just some simple questions, it's quite a bit of language here.
Yeah, I guess I would be interested to, if you know, Mr. Bird would take this on. I would like to know if this is going to be a trend, you know, with lenders. If if this is the trending, the way the lenders are going to start to trend because of the value of water and, you know, typically, you know, I don't know if if these lenders are are actually loaning developers money to buy these water shares. And, you know, that, you know, recoup their cost at the end of the, you know, at the, at the ultimate deal, which is selling a home, you know, a lot, a home. You know, if this is going to be a trend, if this is the way they're leaning, then I would actually like the town of Wellington to be the leading edge of something for once instead of playing catch up all the time, it seems like. So, you know, this might be a great opportunity for us to be, you know, leaning on something. So, but I'm very curious to know if this is what the trend is or if this is just happens to be Points, Points West Bank's new policies, you know, just like everybody, you know, they have banking policies that they set. And, you know, this is their new policy and they're the only one that's going to use that policy and the rest of the banks are. I don't know that, you know, is it in the town's best interest to set an ordinance for one particular lender to do business in town? You know, that's, I guess, kind of a question that I don't know that I'm prepared to to answer right at this point. So I would be very interested to kind of get more information about this. I understand that, you know, the developer is probably obviously wanting to do something and the bank is, you know, wanting some type of security. But that's between those two at this point. It's not more necessarily our, our problem. But we've always, you know, we've heard in the past that the town is not, the town of Wellington isn't the easiest to do business with sometimes. So I I get that, but, you know, it just like I said, if this is a trend where more financial institutions are going to be leaning this way because of the cost of water shares and whatever reason, then I would be very interested in the town of Wellington becoming a leader in this field versus, you know, trying to play catch up next year, which, you know, we all know that we're playing catch up on a lot of things. It'd be nice to be ahead of the curve on something for once. That's my feelings on this.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible we could hear from Mr. Bird? Because he's been in the center of this, development of this policy.
Yeah, well, real quick, here, the trustee Gator speak up and we'll go to Cody.
Okay, I I think I agree. I think it sounds like we need more information. The one request that I would like, and this applies to this, but I think this is more general. I would prefer that we don't have emerg, things brought to us as an emergency ordinance unless there's a legitimate town emergency. Just because a developer wants to get something done faster doesn't constitute an emergency for us. So that would just be my request is that I think we need more time, get the information, but I would prefer this be brought back as a regular ordinance. And that we, I understand it's a just procedural thing, but if something's an emergency to the town, then we treat it as an emergency to the town. Unless this is an emergency to the town, it shouldn't be an emergency ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Cody Bird, anything you can help us out with?
Well, I'm not sure. I I wanted to at least throw in a couple of other considerations. I I know that this is a kind of a complicated subject matter and I don't have any personal feelings one way or another. I respect what the board is is considering. But the couple of things I would would throw out there just for for consideration, a lot of discussion is kind of centered around the the lender in this particular scenario. And that was the request that kind of spurred the conversation. If you, if you take the lender out of the equation, however, I do see that there would be value in allowing water shares to be dedicated to the town and assigned pertinent to a lot for the, for any developer, whether they're using a lender or not. And the reason I say that is we've got at least one developer, potentially two, that have acquired some significant blocks of North Pooter shares that they intend to dedicate to the town to satisfy raw water. When they dedicate those to the town, one share at our current rate satisfies seven and a half single family homes. I I've not constructed half a house before. Some of the concern is that when they make those dedications for a partial lot, what happens to the remainder? And when they dedicate for seven and a half lots, they're not necessarily pulling permits for seven and a half lots at that time either, particularly considering that the town is looking at limiting the number of permits over time. So the consideration I would throw out there is that we've got developers that aren't using any lenders that have acquired shares and would also benefit from the ability to dedicate more than one share at a time and dedicate or satisfy the the raw water dedication requirements for an entire phase of a subdivision, for instance. The other benefit that I could see from a policy that allows this, the shares to be made pertinent to lots is a policy consideration that this board might look at in the future is the ability to require the raw water dedication for, say, 50% of the the water requirements at the time of annexation or at the time of subdivision plat. And if that were the case, the town would benefit from knowing where those water rights have been assigned to. So there's, there's multiple angles that I think have other merits beyond just the lender request for a security interest, including situations where there's no lender involved at all, but those water rights may need to be assigned to a lot. The last component that I wanted to throw out just for consideration, and again, I don't have strong feelings one way or another. But if on the lender component of this, if a lot of the developers that would not be seeking lending assistance are the national builders, they come in with a certain type of housing product. And if we only adopt policies that that kind of reflect the national builders, we could inadvertently create a situation where the local builders aren't able to compete because they may not be able to acquire large blocks of of North Pooter shares to meet the the raw water dedication requirements. It could potentially eliminate the ability for the local builders and the housing variety to be in the Wellington marketplace. I'm not saying that that's a certainty, but it's a possibility that I thought was worth mentioning.
Got something?
I think it's important to note that we have opened the opportunity to developers to bring other shares other than North Pooter.
Sure.
So to limit the con conversation to saying that, you know, development can only be done one way and it's an extremely limited source. Yes, that's true, but there are other water resources available to meet those dedication needs as well. It's not as equivalent as a North Pooter share. The CBT shares are smaller than North Pooter, but I think it's unfair to limit the conversation to just that as well. So how do, how would the, this ordinance affect different shares that shareholders are trying to bring in? Like, how would you equate, if somebody wanted to bring CBT instead of a North Pooter share, how do you have that lined out in the agreement?
Would work the same way. I mean, you, once you have applied water, the town has accepted water rights and we've never received CBT. So I focused on North Pooter, but you're correct, the town can in cases accept CBT. If the town accepted CBT, we would apply the same percentages for CBT to satisfy the the water right requirements or the raw water requirements for specific lots if the developer chose to do that. So would work the same way.
Trustee Whitehouse? Anything?
Yes.
You got anything you want to add here?
No.
All right, you're good. I'm so, well, we don't like the emergency part of it, we know that.
And I said, if you want to adopt it as a non-emergency, that's fine. If you don't want to adopt it, you can table it to a different date. I I I'm not trying, if if I'm sounding like an advocate, I I had understood from the board that we were trying to encourage development.
Yeah, right.
If the board doesn't, if the board wishes to adopt it as a non-emergency, I prefaced it by saying that. If you don't wish to adopt it, you can table it. If you want to table it indefinitely, you can do that as well.
Well, why can't we table it until we get some of these things figured out?
Well, I mean, yeah, that would be a table and we can bring it back.
But as not an emergency and then we can learn a little bit more maybe, but what other, if it is a trend. And then getting a little further information. I, I don't feel comfortable, I don't like the fact of saying, yeah, you're an A on this thing right now tonight myself.
Okay, is there what information? I mean, obviously you've asked the town administrator to get your information. Is there anything else we can get you that would help answer questions?
Well, I think I, I personally would be satisfied with, with that, what's going on out there elsewhere, uh, what other, what other lenders, what other developers might be doing? That's all.
I don't think you'll find other communities are doing it. I, I don't think you'll find other communities to do it. The closest we found was Milliken, but I certainly would, I would encourage the town administrator to find what she can find, and if that works, great. Um, I don't think you'll find a lot of other circumstances where that's working, where that's being applied. But you may.
What do you guys think? What do you think? What do you feel?
You know, like I stated before, I mean, if this is going to be a trend with lenders, obviously, Mr. Byrd made some valid points that, you know, some of the big national developers got deep pockets, they don't need lenders, you know, some of the more local, which I would prefer, you know, local developers building homes for our residents because it's a little easier to get warranty work and that type of, you know. Uh, and if they're the ones that are needing to take advantage of financing and, as I stated earlier, if this is going to become a trend, I would like the town of Wellington to be in front of the trend versus playing catch up down the road. So I don't know if there's any way that, you know, we can do a poll of lenders and, and more, the smaller developers that are having to take advantage of, of financing to see if this is something that's on the horizon or this is just one particular lender. It's, it's, there's not, it's not black and white to me at this point. I still have some gray hair, has that, that I'm, you know, trying to figure out the best direction to go with this. And to follow up on, um, your statement, Mr. Byrd, as far as developers are looking to be able to assign the water to a particular lot that it happens to be a half lot. Um, so they added two shares, I mean, it's 15 lots, but they, it, is that their trend now, is that they're longing to be able to assign? So they, they go in and they develop, they, they've got 120 lots. They decide they're going to build, build on 30 lots in the first, say, phase. So they have enough water shares to cover those 30 lots. They would like to specifically assign those shares or that water to those 30 lots? I guess I'm not sure what, um, what the benefit there is. I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm still kind of gray on that because they've got pretty house worth of lot, or 30 ha, lots worth of water. They can build on any 30 lots that they hadn't in subdivision, because I don't, I mean, I don't, based off, you know, just shares, a piece of paper, not actually water tabs or waterlands. So it's not, it's not quite making sense how that, you know, what that benefit is. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I certainly can. Um, and I, I, I caught most of what you were saying, trustee Jerome. Um, it is a little bit hard to hear, um, but I'll, I'll do my best, but if I miss anything, uh, if you can just ask again and I'll, I'll be circle back around to it. Um, you know, what, what we've got is, uh, we've got a couple of different developers in town currently. Um, and some of them are the developer and the builder for the entire subdivision. Others, we have a developer who is a builder and is also selling lots to other builders. Um, and so the benefit in, in that latter scenario is that they, the developer, if they've acquired the water shares to, to meet the water dedication requirements for, say, a whole phase of a subdivision, the example you used was 30 lots. If they meet that satisf, that water satisfaction requirement, they can then sell those lots to a builder with the water already satisfied. So that local builder may not have to go and find their own water shares. The, in a sense, the developer found the shares, provided the water for the subdivision, and then other builders could build in there as well. That way, when the developer has assigned, those water shares are associated with those lots. When they sell the lot to another builder, they have, the builder can come in and pull a permit and not have to go find a water share or multiple water shares or one water share and buy seven lots. It's just, it allows the more fluidity for, for the developer and the builder to find an agreeable solution, knowing what they're buying, uh, for development purposes. Um, so that's, that was the, the example, um, that I would use. And then the other piece of that, um, with the partial share, or the partial lots, um, the town's policy would allow, uh, cash for the remainder, um, at our equivalent cash and lieu rate. Or as you, uh, trustee mentioned, they could also just go and, and, you know, dedicate two shares to get 15 lots under our current water requirements. If our water requirement were to change, we'd have to reevaluate what the, the, the water satisfaction requirements were on a lot by lot basis. Um, but you're correct that there is other alternatives available to the developers. This would just provide a level of convenience for them to, uh, know with certainty what they're able to do at any moment in time.
Okay, thank you very much. That made, made it a lot more clear to me what, um, you were talking about. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, it doesn't seem that everybody is comfortable either voting this as an emergency measure or it sounds like they want to get a little more information. Did, I'm suggesting we should take some action and roll up this discussion at this point, like maybe table it to, uh, a date certain in the future.
Ms. Garcia, when's our next board meeting?
Uh, 23rd of March. So I, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we table, um, ordinance number one dash 2021, an emergency ordinance impending municipal code to allow water dedications to be treated as pertinent to lots. A move that we table that to our March 23rd board meeting pending, um, additional information for the board as well as it come back as a regular ordinance, not an emergency measure.
Understood.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. I am free.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. If it'd be possible for people up there to actually use their microphones, I'm having a really hard time hearing some of the comments, so if, if.
Okay.
That would be great. I appreciate it.
All right. Trustee Whitehouse, can you hear me okay?
Is it possible for us to turn up the sound a little bit on the zoom or no?
A lot of the two microphones are up, I just need to make sure that you're up close to it.
Okay, speaking, trustee Whitehouse, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, fine, yes.
Okay. I wasn't close enough. I'll have to eat the microphone. Hey. Everybody speak up a little bit. Ordinance number zero two, 20 dash 21, this is an ordinance modifying required initiative ordinance signatures. Okay, Brad?
Mayor and trustees, um, you'll find the ordinance, uh, at, uh, page 91 of your packet. The, uh, at the last meeting, the board requested that we do two things. First, that we, uh, evaluate, um, being able to review ordinances in advance when they're submitted. I think we, in, in reviewing, um, the statutes and reviewing the Hughes Stadium case that trustee Jerome mentioned, who, trustee Jerome requested that we prepare this ordinance changing percentages. Uh, I think the city of Fort Collins, um, and the town have the same rights to review that ordinance and that those pretty much already exist. And we gave you a memo that gave you the explanation of that. The charge that we had when we initially came to the town at the meeting on the 23rd was to discuss the percentage of voters required to initiate a refer matter. And my understanding was this direction from the board was that we establish a 15% requirement for, uh, referring an ordinance and we retain the 5% requirement um, for, for 15 for an initiative, 5% for a referendum. Um, that's what this ordinance is intended to do. Uh, if you look at the section, um, under subsection A, at discussions initiatives, requires 15%. Under subsection B, uh, after the therefore clause, it requires 5%. First question, I can answer that. I'm sorry, I was trying, I thought it was in there, I apologize. And trustee Whitehouse, did you get that?
Uh, yes, Mr. March, I did, thank you.
Okay, good enough. If this opens up, um, in our town code, it, this adds it to our town code, Greg, that.
That's correct.
Election law stuff, so we can, if we have things down the road, it's been opened up now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's what this would do.
Any other comments, Mr. Ordinance?
And unfortunately, we're at 10 o'clock at night right now. The main thing that I would be concerned with this is just what the members of the community think. Um, obviously, I think there's benefit from my end to raising the bar to make sure that we have things that the community truly cares about that are being brought to the voters. Um, but at the same time, I do want to be cognizant about, are we making it too difficult for members of the community to bring something forward? That's the concern I have. So I don't know if we have members of the community still online, but hopefully if we do, I'd like to hear some of their feedback.
Sure, we'll, we'll try to do that. But we're talking about 15, uh, uh, what's the number?
15% of the voters in the election. If you, if you look at it, it's 15% of the registered electors on the town on the date of the notice.
Trustee Kenny, got anything?
Uh, my only thoughts on this were, if there was a compelling item, it wouldn't be an issue to get 15%. So I am okay with this.
Okay, trustee Whitehouse?
I would concur with, uh, trustee Kenny regarding this.
Trustee McDonald, anything? Trustee? It's not, okay, uh, open it up to the public this time for any public comment.
We have Kathy White Dallas. If you can unmute yourself, you will have three minutes to speak.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy White Dallas, 3405 Revere Court. Crystal's probably going to have that memorized. Anyhow, I, I, I have a question. Uh, what percentage of the registered electors in Wellington actually vote? Does anybody know that offhand? You know, is it 10%, 20%, 50%?
I believe in our last election, we had roughly 800 or so vote out of roughly 7,000. So I think it was slightly over 10% voted in the last election at the trustee. I could be a little off, but I think it was somewhere in that range.
Well, so 15% to get, uh, the, uh, signatures from 15% of the people, you would pretty much be, uh, actually, that's more people than usually even vote in one of our elections. I, I don't know. I, I mean, personally, I think it's fine, um, to, to make a little bit higher bar because then you don't mess around with silly stuff and can get any silly thing on the ballot that you want. But, um, yep, I don't know. I, I would say mostly it's okay with me, but, but I just, I was just wondering how that would compare to how many people actually vote.
Kathy, I'd like to get some different numbers for you because I almost got 800 votes personally. So I think it's, so, um, I think we can get you some better numbers, but it might take us a little research. I have voting records from previous elections, so I could share that with you.
Yeah, okay, so you, you're thinking that it's more than 10% basically?
Yeah, I don't know, just based on that information alone.
Okay, no, I, I mean, I, I think it's, um, that what, I, I like having citizen initiated things, but I, uh, think there should be a 15%, I don't think is terrible. I think that's pretty good for stuff for town. So anyhow, so as a community member, I think it's all right. That's all.
We have Wyatt. If you can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this is Wyatt Schwaneman Curtis from 3737 Franklin Avenue. Um, I'm just curious, does this, would this just affect future, um, initiatives? Or does it affect stuff that's already being worked on?
Future, just future.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And just as a clarification, Brad, it's 15% of the registered electors, not 15% of the population.
Correct. Anyone else?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Hey, we'll bring it back to the board.
Oh, my God, motion that we approve ordinance 2, uh, 022021 in ordinance modifying required initiative ordinance signatures.
Second. Go call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Just with one condition, the date on the end of it is February.
It needs to be changed as well. Got it.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, item four, strategic plan update. Mahala?
Hi, Mayor and Board. Thanks for having me with you tonight. I'm excited to be back. Going over the strategic plan changes that we had talked about based on the survey that was put out, seems like forever ago, but it was just in December. So here are just some updates for you. I've got the current versus the proposed, um, all lined out. So first I'll start, I'm just going to run through it really quick. You can see new changes versus kind of what was, what is currently in place. So the proposed changes are with the vision statement to add strives to be after Wellington. So it would, we, it would read Wellington strives to be one of the best small towns in America, recognized as a great place to raise a family, own a unique business and create memorable experiences through community activities. This change was just in response to, um, some members who had talked about the current versus past tense of a vision statement. Moving on to number two, the thought was to remove the word intentional of the, uh, growth and development title right there. Really, it was just, um, some folks had raised concern with that word intentional. Other words were proposed since is set such as balanced. However, balanced is stated in goal one, so we figured we could align all of the titles by removing those descriptors, as you'll see on infrastructure as well. So sustainability also proposed to be removed or sustainable. It would just read infrastructure and then kind of we're communicating that sustainable, um, goal through sustainable intention through the goals themselves. Number four would be to remove enhanced partnerships. This was really, there were some questions about what does that mean? Um, can we get more specific on that? And then we actually went back in the document that town staff is working on to align our goals with the strategic plan and actually didn't have, um, detail built out for that partnership goal. So we thought maybe, um, partnership is kind of throughout the document in knowing that to attain these goals, we have to have partnerships. So maybe just adjusting that a little bit. The final change would be to adjust to the number, um, down there from goal five to goal four, um, with removing that enhanced partnerships. So that's all of the changes that we, um, had kind of collaborated and come up with just to make sure that we are incorporating resident feedback and, um, hopefully getting something that still really preserves the original meaning, um, but maybe hits some of those, um, concerns that were raised. Happy to answer any questions or, um, anything you need.
Okay, just go down the line, trustee Gator.
Uh, really, my only comment is I like these changes. I think it, um, keeps the meaning of what the board intended, but it does take in. I think it keeps the meaning of what the board intended, but it does take into effect, like, obviously, there are words that we understand when we put this together, but that didn't translate to the community clearly. And so I think this does a good job of bringing that community feedback in, so I like it, and I appreciate taking action on the community feedback. I think it's great.
Trustee McDonald, anything?
I think removing goal four was a mistake. I think to remove the enhance and explore partnerships is a disservice to the community. And for that to be, it was disappointing to hear that that removal came from staff. That's all I have to say about that.
Can we still keep something, just different wording?
Well, I think that the strategic plan aligns the board's visions and goals along with the staff's. And I think as elected officials, one of our main goals is to enhance and explore partnerships.
I can clarify.
Why wouldn't we? Is it, but is it, but was it vague? Is that why a partnership meant?
I don't know, it's just discouraging to see that removed.
Because partnership means we're working with other municipalities, other agencies, and we do that.
Yeah, the concerns from the members of the community from reading through the feedback and the surveys was just, what does that mean by enhance partnerships? So if we can find a better way to clarify that, I think it might address that, and we can keep that. But that was the concern, is what does that mean by enhance and explore partnerships? Obviously, we understood that in our conversation, but that didn't translate well to the community,
Well, we can think about that, can't we? We don't know, we can rethink that one. That's important, that's what we do.
I'll just clarify on behalf of staff as well. I don't think that my intention, I think I may have miscommunicated, was not that staff had removed that thought, just that we hadn't really been able to figure out how to name or figure out goals, because it's so essential, it's laced into every other goal that we have, because it is something that really does matter, and it is absolutely incorporated as the goal's vision. So wasn't, not at all that removing partnerships is not important, it is absolutely essential, but rather, it was so incorporated in other goals, we hadn't necessarily built out that goal, if that makes sense.
Trustee Jerome, got anything you want to say? Trustee Knutson? Trustee Whitehouse, you want to say anything?
Well, I was, I was gonna sort of echo, you know, whether we put that in or not, I mean, but certainly, I think we all recognize here that there are issues facing the town of Wellington that we absolutely are gonna need to partner with. We cannot solve all our own problems by ourselves, so we will have to build, you know, partnerships with people. I mean, think about the B dams and some other issues. So whether it's explicitly stated, I think certainly, I mean, the town's doing it, we're forced to. And we get better, I think we get a better result than, you know, building those ties. So I don't have any really big issue with it, that's my comments.
Trustee Kenny?
I'm fine with the feedback, although I am disappointed about losing that fourth one, too. I do realize that it is important, so it may not be part of our strategic plan, but that is, and I guess I don't know how that might align, it is a goal always to work with our partners, so, but I'm fine with the changes otherwise as listed.
Okay, I like the changes, they're fine, but I don't know why we gotta remove goal number four, that's just enhancing partnerships.
Sure, and Patty Garcia, Town Administrator, you know, we talked quite a bit about that as staff, in looking in the community feedback, we'd requested information from our community about how they felt about the strategic plan. And overwhelmingly, we were told that they don't understand what that meant, what that statement meant. We felt as staff that that was something that is, we work on that continually, and we can build that out in some of our, our goals that we'll set up once, you know, we get this plan in place. And so that will be the overriding theme throughout all of the work that we do to support the strategic plan, our goals that are set up. We, of course, need to explore all those partnerships and, you know, use them to the best of our ability. Saying that, this is what we would consider an amended strategic plan. And if, you know, the Board of Trustees would like us to continue looking for an avenue to include some sort of language in partner, you know, partnership in this, we can certainly do that and maybe make it a little bit clearer, cleaner, or clear for individuals. I don't know, but we, we can, of course, continue to modify as we need to, but felt like we were going to hit the mark as far as partnerships and the goals that would be following.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Maybe you can add a descriptor in goal four that explains that, that goal of the town staff to more clearly communicate those partnerships. Because what I'm hearing you say is those partnerships exist, but we're obviously not doing a very good job communicating that they exist, who they're with, or what they're about. So maybe that could be incorporated into that goal.
Okay.
Would that be a fair compromise, or?
I think so. I mean, I mean, this is, this is your strategic plan, we're trying to meet your needs in the community, however the community wants that as well. So we can certainly explore that, and Mahala is a great wordsmith-er, so I think we can probably come up with something to satisfy that. We didn't, I guess we didn't, we didn't know that that was, that was so important to you all, so I apologize that we took it out without talking to you all first, but we can certainly work on that.
It may have come back online through the community feedback that that wasn't clear, but some of the community engagement, like when we did the dot exercise in here, that was something that was talked about almost at nausea. And the community that participated in those conversations didn't seem to have any confusion about what those partnerships were, or what they looked like.
Good to know, thank you for that. Sometimes I met with Kelly Hodling today, and I got so many backstories that suddenly things were starting to make sense, so yet again, another backstory, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
So we will work on that.
Yeah.
So for clarification, as far as developing those partnerships, are they partnerships with local communities, business partners? What, what are those partnerships related to?
It was not defined. So my recommendation would, you know, our strategic plan, these, these terms should be fairly broad, we don't want to limit ourselves. So however we can describe that, so that those that didn't understand that term of municipal partnerships, we'll have to figure that out. But I, I would not anticipate drilling it down far into what type of partnerships those are, but just leave it very broad.
I see where you're, where you're going with that, that as a generalized goal, it may not fit best specifically under infrastructure, because those partnerships would be important not just for infrastructure, but for other elements as well. So maybe in organizational strength or growth and development.
I, I'm pretty broad, I think we need a lot of partnerships, you know, everywhere.
Yeah, I think we'll just put it.
That's what we're about.
Yeah, I think maybe either growth and development, it makes sense, or organizational strength. We'll, we'll talk about it internally and, and keep, keep, keep making this the document you can be really proud of, and we can present that to the community, so.
You'll get there.
We'll get there, we're working on it.
You'll get on that one, that's, that's not a hard one to come up with.
Make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So I know this is an area specifically where trustees McDonald and Kenny are both earnings, this is a strength of theirs, just from the meetings that we've had, would the two of you be comfortable working with town staff as they try to reword that to make it more clear as what it is, so that when they bring it back to the board, the two of you have actually had input in that process? Is that something that would be, the two of you'd be willing to do?
Absolutely.
Let's say please say yes. Yes. Perfect, a great idea, thank you.
Anything for the public?
We have Kathy Wydellis, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Wydellis, three, four, oh, five, Revere Court. I am glad that all those changes were made. I think it, it just spiffed it up and made it a lot tighter. I mean, some of these things were, have very vague meanings and very woke meanings sometimes. The partnership part is just plain vague, and like, like everybody said, it was, it's, there's partnerships for all those things, so it just kind of seemed like a duh moment, it's like, yeah, of course there's partnerships. And it didn't seem like that was a goal to have, because you have to have them anyway. So I, I know, I like all the changes, thanks.
We have none other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Entertainer motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution eight dash twenty twenty, a resolution approving, oh, sorry, sorry, I apologize, I'm forward one. I have moved that we approve the strategic plan updates pending future changes to come back from staff and trustees McDonald and Kenny to the board about the goal number four, enhance and explore partnerships.
Second, go call, please.
Trustee Gator? Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Yes, I don't think you have your mic on.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, move on, item five, resolution zero eight dash twenty twenty-one, resolution approving the town administrators, administrative plan of organization.
Okay, I've made it ninety days, I'm so proud. It has been so much fun. Every challenge, I, my, I tell my family, and they tell me, they're like, you look so happy, and I'm like, I am thrilled, because I like challenges, and I'm bored to tears if I'm not challenged, and boy, do I have challenges, be careful what you ask for, but have enjoyed this immensely. So one of the requirements, as you well know, is I'm to supply to the Board of Trustees a plan of organizational plan, so I provided that in the packet, of course, at the top of it is the residents of Wellington, and then the Board of Trustees, and then it drills down from there. So the only change that I made that had been in previous, a previous document that I've seen was I moved the town clerk under the town administrator, which is typical in a municipality of this size. Ms. Hodling will be taking care of management analyst and the market and communications specialist, and then oversee planning, parks and rec, library, and HR. So, and I've kept public works, which is a very large department and really in a phase of growth, so really needs a lot of attention, I believe, and finance, and then I'll have town clerk underneath me, as well as Kelly. So really looking forward to the next ninety days, hundred days, hundred and twenty days. I will be, I will be providing to you a template for the town administrator evaluation. I want you to have a chance to look at it. Of course, my, my year won't be up for a bit, but I want to give you an opportunity to look at it and provide any feedback areas you think that the town administrator should be evaluated and that it might be missing. Also, in June, you'll be receiving a list of goals from me, something that you can measure my performance off of. So I want to make sure, I was gonna try to submit something with this, but I'm really not there yet. I need to be able to make sure that the goals that I provide to you make sense, and that they're measurable and attainable. So that'll be coming in June, and so we'll just keep moving along. So thank you so much for allowing me to serve your community, this has been just great. Do you have any questions for me?
Yep, any questions? The plan?
Just in general, I think you've done a fantastic job, so it's been great to have you on board. I just, it looks good, I appreciate, and I think it's important for people to note that the people at the top of the thing are not the town administrator, it's not even the town board, it's the residents. So I think that's very important, that it's great that we recognize that, but I think for our residents, too, so it looks good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Kenny?
I have very much enjoyed working with you, so thank you very much. You are so pleasant to hang out with, and a source of so much knowledge, so I appreciate your expertise, and, and I look forward to working with you more.
Thank you.
Trustee Whitehouse?
I have to concur with the comments made by the trustees who spoke prior to me, so yeah, it's great, you're awesome. So thank you.
Okay. Well, then, I like the chart, it's quite a few positions there.
Yep, so, and I did not say this, but those that are in grant are vacant currently, currently vacant. We have just published the building official position, so it is out making the round, so very excited about the applicants we get for that position.
Good. I like the way you section these very important positions for you, okay? Because you know what we gotta work with.
Yes.
All right, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, then, just nothing to say, can I get a motion to approve resolution zero eight, twenty twenty-one?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I think we have to open this for public comment.
I see no hands raised at this time.
All right. Try it again. Want to entertain a motion to approve zero eight, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Patty. Thank you very much. Okay, item six, board policy, planning commission referral items, Brad?
Item six, I think you'll find, I think, believe that it's found at page one ninety-nine of the board packet. This was a proposed policy that we were asked to prepare relative to referrals coming from the planning commission and allowing tabling, or presuming that it would be tabled if the planning commission had not finally acted. If there's questions, we can make changes. I've run it through trustee Gator, who I think, believed is comfortable with the form of the policy.
Yeah, I know I'm the one that asked that we do this, it looks good to me, I think that, just the main thing for me is it's a very odd situation where we need to delay something, and I think that it's important that we just have a precedent set by the board that that's our policy. So there's never a question about, because in my mind, it felt before, like, well, staff was making a decision for the board, but in this case, we're putting a policy in place that board is making a decision, we table it until the planning commission has come to a final decision, whatever that is. So I think this is good.
By any chance, have we had Mr. McCaffrey weigh in on this at all? Mr. McCaffrey is the chair of the planning commission still, correct?
Yes.
I have not, I did not get his input, this was a board policy, I can't.
Well, we didn't ask him, because, you know, it's ours to take up, not his.
Well, we just asked the community about everything else, so I just wanted to make sure that we were being fair.
We can do that. Guess we'll send it back to Brett McCaffrey before we do anything else with it.
That's fine.
All right, good enough. Is that really necessary? Sounds like it.
I disagree. I mean, the planning commission, they are tasked with either forwarding a recommendation or not. We're talking about the board's acceptance of their table. It's really a board option, what we're discussing. It doesn't change anything from the perspective of the policy, or from the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding of this is, if the planning commission, if everything's been set up, and the planning commission decides to carry it over to another meeting because they're asking for more information, it's already been put on our agenda, and everything's been advertised, this is just, the policy says that if we haven't received a final decision from the planning commission, that we will table it until we receive one. That's my understanding of it, so it doesn't really matter what the, you know, this is a reactionary to what happened, what's coming out of the planning commission, so this would be a board thing, it doesn't really affect how the planning commission operates or anything, it just sets what we're gonna do if they haven't given us a decision yet. I'm okay with going on it tonight.
Anyone else? Trustee Gator, you're good with it?
I'm good with it. Yeah, I, I think it's good.
I, I think it's more for us than it is.
It is, yeah.
I understand what.
It's just a question. I didn't think it needed to go back. It was just a question.
We're here in front of the public. We didn't give it Burt's chance, you know? So I want to make sure everybody gets heard. I think I'm fine with it. So. It's going to open up to the public.
I see no hands raised at this time.
All right. Well, let's bring it back to the board. Let's put it to the vote.
So hereby motioned that we approve board policy, planning commission referral items.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We're gonna move to reports. Anything?
Quickly, we have, I've spoken with the attorney who represents the proponents, the marijuana initiative. We had some language we worked through. My impression is we'll probably be bringing that to the board on the twenty third to review the changes were made that we agreed to with proponents and consider the possibility of referring matter. Actually, probably just take it in the executive session and ultimately take it to refer. We would not refer it to the next meeting.
Yep.
Quickly, actually, it's not me. Kelly Hodling's back, thrilled to no end. Working mornings. She's doing great. Hallie wanted to give a quick update on the CAC and Bob had a quick update on plans for the snow event. I see Hallie on the line. There we go. Hallie, give us a quick update.
Good evening, mayor and board of trustees, or I guess good night. I don't even know at this point. Um, I just wanted to give a heads up that the CAC has been working very diligently to get the Easter egg hunt on April third approved by the county, and it's looking like we actually are going to get there. So we are going to do a pre-registration for all attendees so we can contact trace per county variance. We'll require masks at all times and promote distancing. But I just wanted to put it on your radar that we will start publicizing that once we get the official go ahead from the CAC and the county. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Good job.
I'm just gonna go and say good morning, mayor and board members. We're almost at the morning and I'll make this real quick. Little update on our response to this upcoming snow event. I think most of y'all have been watching the forecast and know that we might be in line for two feet of snow or so this weekend. So we're looking at some, some extra measures in terms of twenty-four hour on-call and perhaps putting some of our plow drivers up here locally because it's, it's one thing to drive a snow plow around Wellington, but it's another thing to actually get to Wellington so you can get in that snow plow. So we need to make sure our guys are here. We're also going to, working with Mahala on some public notices, just reminders about some, you know, the, the, some of the basic things that people know, but may appreciate a reminder, don't park your car. If you can move your car off of the street, that would be best because when you push two feet of snow off to the side and you're burying cars and there's no place else for that snow to go, really, don't park under, you know, deadish looking tree limbs and things of that sort. So. We'll also be, I'll be working with Patty on reaching out to some of the emergency providers in case they close the gate there on I twenty-five. And as many of you know, when that happens, people pull right off into Wellington and you get people parking on Sixth Street. And we have occasionally in the past needed to open up the Leaper Center for the Red Cross and, and those types of events.
One other thing that we'll be doing for the Board of Trustees is we'll be getting reports out from the plow, the plow crew as to when they're going out, what they're doing, what streets they're working on, things like that. So if you get calls or get contacted, you can at least have an educated response on that. So I'll be providing that information to you by email as I receive it. We're also going to be getting a great map and hoping, or working really hard to get a good map on our website showing those plow roads, routes and what's, you know, what's a priority one, priority two, and you know, things like that, so that it'll be a little more understandable for our citizens. So they're not frustrated if their residential street is not plowed because they're taking care of some of these other priority routes. So we will be getting that up and ready as well.
If I could just make one suggestion in regards to the Leaper Center being opened up. I, I was kind of involved with that the last time we had the bomb site loan two years ago.
Okay.
The Red Cross was not prepared. They opened up the Leaper Center, but they were not prepared to basically provide any type of services to folks. I ended up going down the Family Dollar and buying coffee makers, coffee creamer, drinks and snacks. So we had stuff here. So I don't know if maybe somebody could contact the American Red Cross and maybe have them prep a package, you know, ready to be dispatched up here, or maybe have it dispatched up here ahead of time. So in case that does happen, then there's a little bit of preparedness here. It was, it was just kind of embarrassing that we had folks that came off the interstate that were directed down here and basically they had a room with nothing.
Okay.
You know, so.
Perfect. Good to know.
If that's, you know, if we could maybe just help them prepare, you know, I'm sure they're inundated with all kinds of stuff. But in, you know, if they're not prepared, maybe the town will look at, you know, going out and just acquiring some basic water and, you know, whatever to maybe just have some stuff here just in case we need it. Because I know that the sheriff's department ended up ferrying several people to hotels from here last time too, or at least made some type of arrangements to get them transported from, from here to a place to spend the evening. So.
Sounds good. Yeah, I was waiting to see that we were supposed to get some more information tonight about the trajectory of the system and then tomorrow start working on those partnerships that we have in place to, to see how to facilitate that. So I appreciate your comments, trustee Jerome.
Yeah.
It's good to hear it from somebody who experienced that.
It was just, you know, I drove down here because I just had a sneaking suspicion and I arrived as the first folks coming off the interstate were dropped off here. You know, it was, I walked in the road, looked around and the Red Cross volunteer, she's like, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Not this time. Good to hear it, Bob. I hope it goes well.
Thank you, Bob.
Hope for the worst, hope for the best. We'll find out. Okay. Board reports. Or we do.
All right. So just a quick update from the CAC. They did vote to, on the fourth of July, they voted to keep the parade on Cleveland. But they did vote to move all of the festivities down to the community park. And so they're still working out the details of exactly what that's going to look like, but that was the decision the CAC made. And so I know when I came to the board, asked for thoughts on that, we told the, let the CAC make the decision. So they made their decisions. I'm just letting everybody know. They are, mentioned they will continue to work out the details. We will have two members of the CAC joining us for our work session next week. When we're talking about fireworks with, I believe, the sheriff's department and the fire district. So I believe Chairman Bacon and then also Sherrell Teets are planning to attend that meeting in their official CAC capacity. So if you have questions, and I know they've spoken to other members of the CAC, so just so you're aware, they'll be joining us for our work session. And then the couple of other items, and I don't want to have discussion on these tonight because it's ten thirty. But I would like for us to, at maybe a future work session or board meeting to discuss our state of emergency. We've been operating under an indefinite state of emergency since COVID started. And I think that it would be wise for us to have a discussion about that, whether we continue to stay in that, whether we give it an end date or come out of it altogether. So we don't need to talk about that tonight, but I would like to have that discussion the next month or so. And then also there was that was brought up, we were talking about the water efficiency plan about focusing on the tiers for water rates. And it was said that we basically, we need to do something with that, but it wasn't really clear, do we want staff to look into that or not? So I think we just need to have clear direction to staff as to whether or not we're going to be looking into doing anything and changing tiers for water rates, or we're just gonna leave it be. Just that way staff knows one way or the other, because it was a little ambiguous on my end because we talked about it, but then we didn't really say look into it or don't. So those are my items.
Just on the, the water rates, I thought that we agreed that we were going to review water rates on a quarterly basis. Every quarter, we are going to look at the water rates and see if there's any type of adjustments to be made. So that kind of would cover what you're looking for, right?
Yeah, I mean, we are kind of in the next quarter, but I, the question is, is do we want staff to look into, do we need to make changes? Or do we want to wait? Or what does board want to do with that? So.
I guess I was under the impression that when we changed the rates to begin with, part of the language that we actually stated was we will, you know, we will review on a quarterly basis. So I guess coming up this month, we should be reviewing those.
Review. Okay, this was before me, so I may have to go back and look at minutes or meetings. Review the rates themselves on a quarterly basis?
To see where, if we're accomplishing our goals and if there's any adjustments.
As far as amount of water that we have available?
No, no, no. No, the water rates. Because we changed our, our policy.
Yes.
But with the, with the volatility or the volatility of everything, we wanted to kind of address, look at it, at least look at it on a quarterly basis and see if there's any adjustments that need to be made.
Are we over?
Are we, are we hitting our goal? Are we, if we're not hitting our goal, then we obviously.
What do we need to do? I get it now. Thank you.
Hitting our goal, are we exceeding our goal, then we can look at maybe lowering them a little bit. So that was what my recollection of that whole thing was. I may be wrong, but I thought it was quarterly.
No, we talked about doing it quarterly.
Okay.
Trustee Kenny, do you remember? I thought it was quarterly because that was one of your hot buttons.
I know that I wanted to monitor. I don't know if we're necessarily changing rates quarterly.
Well, no, I didn't say change. I meant.
In case it was freaking somebody out that we're changing that quarterly.
Nope, sorry. We agreed to review it on a quarterly basis just to make sure that, you know, everything was.
Yeah.
You know, if, if we had to do any type of adjustments, we knew about them and then obviously we could take action at some point. But at least we were aware, instead of letting things get out of hand, that brought us to the point we're at right now. So.
I think it's.
That was just kind of, I, I was pretty sure, we can go back and look, but I, I thought that was the agreement we made when we, you know, dealt with this and raised rates was that we were going to, you know, at least evaluate to see where we're at so that, you know, future decisions can be made based off of reality, not guesswork. So.
I appreciate the clarification. I understand completely. Thank you.
No, it was, it was quarterly.
Okay, perfect. We'll get it done.
That's all I got.
Oh, trustee Kenny's raising her hand.
I got.
Trustee Kenny?
Just as a quick review, two thousand sixteen general election, Wellington, sixty-seven percent of voters voted. Sixty-two of those, sixty-two of all the voters voted by mail versus the Colorado average was sixty-three percent. And then two thousand twenty, the overall Colorado total was seventy-four. So it looks like we're kind of on track or ahead of standard voter turnout. So I just pulled those numbers from the last voter information I had available.
Okay. Trustee McDonald, anything? Trustee Whitehouse?
No, sir.
Okay. I've got nothing. But I got ten thirty-nine. I'm going to do it during all favor.
Aye.